Hello and welcome to the School Board Work Session for October 11th, 2021. Excited to start a great work session today. We'll begin with a roll call of board members. So Zone 1, Susan Greenberg.
I'm here.
Great. Zone 2, Karen Perez.
Hola, I'm here.
Zone 3, Eric Simpson.
Present.
Zone 4, Sunita Garg.
Here.
Zone 5, Ugana Enenaya.
I'm here.
Zone 6, Becky Timchuck.
Here.
And Zone 7, Tom Colette, I'm here. So we are all present. Let's start by moving on to our first agenda item. Karen and Toshiko, I'm really excited to receive our presentation on Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yes, good afternoon, School Board members, Board Chair Colette, Superintendent Grodding, staff and community members. My name is Toshiko Marizio, Administrator for Multilingual Programs, and I have the honor of being in community with several individuals that have helped put this presentation together. Joining me today, I hope Gary Wesley is here. He's the District Title VI Coordinator, Pat McCurry, BSD Administrator for Equity and Inclusion, Brandon Colbertson is our Native American Tosa, Dr. Karen Perez, a Zone 2 Board Member, Board Chair Tom Colette, and all of our Board Members really who will have a part of this in this presentation. We are excited to celebrate October 11th as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I just realized, David, we don't have the slides up. So let's see. Can I share my screen? Sorry, David, can you drive?
They're up now.
All right, and could you advance? All right. So today is October 11th, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Today is really about acknowledging the painful history from many of our tribal nations. It's about bringing to light our past, facing the wrongdoings that many European explorers inflicted on our indigenous communities. But more specifically, today is about acknowledging the commitment that our school board made last year when they passed our board resolution, naming the 2nd Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Next slide, please. We have four key agenda items. We would like to start off with a blessing of our community space, then our board members will read the land acknowledgement. We will do that in English and in Spanish. Then we will lead into the background and development of the resolution. Finally, we will end with next steps and how we are taking action towards implementing this resolution. So I will now pass it over to Gary Wesley, who will do the blessing of our space, or Brendan Colbertson. Hope Gary is here. You can go ahead and unmute.
Blue. Thank you, Toshiko. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. My name is Gary Wesley, the Title VI Program Facilitator. And today, in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I ask that at the end of each of our segments, hold your hands like this to honor those people who are speaking, to show gratitude for the words that they say.
You're okay now?
Sorry, that was a... Someone checking on me. So before we start our presentation, I'd like to say a quick blessing in our language. And just for context, you know, this is going to be the first time that I'll be speaking in my language. So this is definitely a byproduct of colonialism, not knowing my language. And so I ask that we keep that in mind moving forward. Salih Tayi, Ayemasi, Puskanawaita, Luksa, Nsai, Wunup, Kimtix, Naisgat, Tiong, Naiset, Plut, Ntsetka, Tiong, Naiskoye, Woket, Naissemuk, Kimtux, Lukpilip, Diuk, Sa, Ayemasi Puskanawaita, Yed, Daklukson, Natsit, Kluts, Ntsetka, Chax, Yawa, Kap, Sush, Dampdum, Ayismasi Pus, Luksa. For our translation, says Creator, we thank you for everything today. We honor our ancestors. We think about our elders, and we hope they're well. We hope our families are well also. We honor our earth and the water. Thank you to everyone here today. We hope you are here with a good heart. Thank you for today. Ayemasi. That's one to the, thank you.
Oh, that was hard to follow, and I don't really want to follow that in the sense that, well, you just made me feel real good, man. This is an educational space, and we are here to talk about creating positive environment for our students. And here we see it firsthand, our facilitator being brave and stepping out on a limb and willing to take a risk, and, you know, to to right those historic wrongs, but then also just kind of complete that sense of self. And so I really appreciate, I think we're all doing that in a way, but it takes a lot of guts to do that, Gary. So thank you. And so I'm like 20 seconds into my minute here, so let me talk fast.
We've come along. Brandon, Brandon, we're going to get into the land acknowledgement
Oh, my bad.
and Dr. Karen Perez.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You bet. So acknowledgement to indigenous communities.
Next slide, please.
We honor the original owners and stewards of this land. Beaverton School District rests upon the traditional village sites of the Tuolton Kalapuya. We honor the Kalapuya for being the original caretakers and protectors of these lands since time immemorial, and for passing on their teachings and lifeways through past and present generations. We acknowledge that in our school district, there is indigenous heritage from throughout the Americas. Languages, traditions, history and knowledge have been carried in the hearts and minds of the different generations. We are honored and privileged to learn from the wisdom of the many indigenous communities, Native Nations, leaders, students and families who demonstrate strength, resilience, resistance, healing and creativity. We are grateful to have the opportunity to reconcile and start building bridges with the Native Nations through incorporating their perspectives and contributions to global knowledge and social justice in our classrooms and beyond.
Next slide, please. Honramos a los dueños y protectores originales de esta tierra. El distrito escolar de Beaverton se encuentra en los sitios tradicionales del pueblo Tuolton Kalapuya. Honramos a los Kalapuya por ser los protectores originales de estas tierras desde tiempos inmemoriales y por compartir sus enseñanzas y estilo de vida con las generaciones pasadas y presentes. Reconocemos que en nuestro distrito escolar hay herencias indígenas de diferentes partes del continente americano. Lenguas tradicionales, historias y conocimientos han sido llevados en la mente y los corazones a través de las distintas generaciones. Nos sentimos honrados y privilegiados de aprender de la sabiduría de las muchas comunidades indígenas, nacionales, nativas, líderes, estudiantes y familias quienes han demostrado fuerza, resiliencia, resistencia, sanación y creatividad. Estamos agradecidos de tener la oportunidad de reconciliarnos y empezar a construir lazos con las naciones nativas a través de las incorporaciones de sus perspectivas y contribuciones al conocimiento y la justicia social en nuestros salones y más allá. Next slide, please. So Brandon and Pat, next slide, please.
Okay, am I good to jump in?
Yep.
All right, awesome. Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time and making this space today. This right here is clearly evidence of the district moving forward in a meaningful way and engaging with community and and individuals that work at the Beaverton School District, as well as people on the board who this, you know, it's part of their life. So that's so great to see. We, I'm gonna keep track of the time here. We have in the district anywhere from 12% to 14% of our students that self-identify as AIAN, but really what that means is indigenous, right? And so we hope to be able to get a clear picture of where these students are so that we can better meet their needs in a culturally responsive way and establishing relationships. And it's our hope with this language, world heritage adoption, excuse me, world language adoption, and the inclusion of tribal heritage language within it, and as well as just moving forward with this SB 13 work, as well as hoping to grow our Title VI program to better meet the needs of our, I think it's like 587 students who are tribally affiliated. Right now, we have about 145 students in the program. So once we beef those numbers up, we'll be toward the top of the state. And so I think collectively, we really, we can make a model for the rest of the state, as well as the region, and who knows even further. So thanks for the time, and happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. Pat?
Thank you, Brandon, and thank you, Gary, as well. Board, thank you for having us as part of today's agenda. I'm reminded that it was just over a year ago when Brandon and I were here with you explaining the work we'd done around this resolution, the rationale for it, and listening joyfully as you adopted this resolution. So thank you for that. As we know, in our equity journey, with every step forward we take, we uncover at least five new steps we need to take. And so just as this resolution brought us to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day and American Indian Alaska Native Heritage Month, I am so pleased to see us doing that again, acknowledging it again, because that's what it asks us to do, is not just do it once, but continually. In just a moment, you're going to have an opportunity to see the resolution, and I want to acknowledge that we are doing exactly what it asks us to do. We are utilizing the 2nd Monday in October, named Indigenous Solidarity Day, as an opportunity to reflect upon the continued resilience and contributions of the indigenous peoples of this land, to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the people in our region, and to stand in solidarity with indigenous peoples everywhere. So thank you for the opportunity to do that with you again today, and I look forward to continued acknowledgement and observation of this day and equity work moving forward.
And as we move to the next slide, please, we'll have each of our board members by zone read some of the pieces of our resolution in honor of this work that we are embarking on, that we have committed to embarking on. So we'll have Susan start, Zone 1.
Whereas the Beaverton School District recognizes the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas, have occupied these lands since time immemorial as the original inhabitants, and whereas the board recognizes that Tuolton Valley was a land of the Afaglati band of the Kalapua Indians, after whom the valley is named, and...
Next slide, please. Whereas the board recognizes that Beaverton School District is built upon the homelands and villages and traditional use areas of the Kalapuya of this region, without whom the building of the district would not have been possible. And whereas the current number of Portland Metro's native population is estimated at nearly 70,000, the current Native American population of Washington County is estimated to be 10,437, and is composed of people belonging to a multitude of indigenous nations. Further, the current number of BSD students who self-identify as indigenous presently stands at 3,512. That's about 12% of the BSD students, and is expected to continue to grow. And, next slide, please. Zone 3.
Whereas the board recognizes the value of many contributions that have been made and continue to be made to our community by the indigenous peoples through advances in education, medicine, art, culture and public service. And whereas the board has established that each student is to be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, languages, ideas, beliefs and values within a school community, and...
Next slide, please, Zone 4.
Whereas the board has a responsibility to work to counteract ramifications of the American indigenous Indian genocide, historic Indian genocide, historic forced assimilation practices and lasting systemic racism towards indigenous peoples of the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education and social crisis. And whereas the district has an adopted equity policy that states our commitment to closing the access, opportunity and advancement gaps for the indigenous peoples and creating an educational environment where all...
Next slide, please, Zone 5.
Whereas the district is working towards eliminating the racial predictability and disproportionality on all aspects of education, and has established an Office of Equity and Inclusion. Whereas Oregon Senate Bill 13, Tribal History/Shared History enacted in 2017 and created by Oregon's nine federally recognized tribes, directs the Oregon Department of Education, or DE, to create K-12 Native American curriculum for inclusion in all Oregon public schools, and...
Next slide, please, Zone 6.
Whereas the Beaverton School District supports the professional development of educators in order to facilitate the teaching of statewide curriculum relating to the Native American experience in Oregon, including tribal history, tribal sovereignty, cultural treaty rights, government socioeconomic experiences and current events. Now, therefore, be it resolved that every 2nd Monday of October will be celebrated as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that the month of November shall be promoted as Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month within the Beaverton School District.
Next slide, please, Zone 7.
And be it further resolved, the district shall encourage staff to utilize the 2nd Monday in October, named henceforth as Indigenous Solidarity Day, as an opportunity to reflect upon the continued resilience and contributions of the indigenous peoples of this land to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of indigenous peoples of our region, and to stand in solidarity with indigenous peoples elsewhere. And be it further resolved, the month of November is a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, to raise awareness about our shared history, and to acknowledge the important contributions of the Native American community today. The board encourages staff, students and the community to observe, recognize and to learn from the past and present in order to better understand the experiences that shaped the United States. And be it further resolved, that the board strongly encourages our staff and community to observe, recognize and celebrate the culture, heritage and contributions of Native Americans to our country, our state, our cities and our schools.
Next slide, please. And one of our intent is to not only have the resolution, but actually to talk through action steps. So we'll have Toshiko get us started on that part. Next slide, please.
Yeah, so these next slides are part of the resolution that we either have suggested actions for, as well as actions that we've already taken. And so Karen, do you want to go ahead and share this first suggested action for the board?
Yeah. For this first suggested action, we're being asked to, as a board, consider, there's a request to break down the AIAN data by subgroups to include federal tribes affiliation and migrant status in order to assess whether we are on track towards eliminating the racial predictability and disproportionality that exists in our systems. Without that breakdown, we can't see where our title money is going toward our native youth students if we aren't breaking it down, the data in that way. So the ask is that we actually break down the AIAN data when we are presented information about our students by the federal tribe affiliation and migrant status, so that we can actually track and see where we are improving and where we have, still have that disproportionality in our work. Next slide, please.
So one of the resolutions here is around Senate Bill 13, Tribal History Shared History. And just so you know, just for the board to know and the community, that multilingual department in collaboration with TNL and building administrators, and we do have a three-year SB 13 implementation plan that's laid out for all buildings. We also have SB 13 teams at every school, as well as continued funding from Title II grants. And additionally, the Oregon Department of Education just hired an outside research group to survey teachers and administrators across the state as a way to check in on the implementation, to gather feedback on additional supports that are needed. The next resolution is about developing educators in order to facilitate the teaching of statewide curriculum and several actions that have taken, that we have taken already, is that we invited the Oregon Teacher of the Year, Nicole Butler-Hooton, who is part of the Soletz and Apachi tribal community, to provide PD to teachers, teacher leaders, as well as elementary administrators on her experience as a BIPOC teacher, how she incorporates tribal lessons and how administrators can work with BIPOC staff. We also try to incorporate the tribal history, shared history lens in the adoption process, particularly when we did the social studies, ethnic studies, adoption. We also added Brandon Colbertson, who's our native Tosa, as part of this resolution, this action. Next slide, please. This next resolution is about encouraging our staff and community to observe, recognize and celebrate the culture, heritage and contributions of our Native Americans. And a suggested action is that in collaboration with our community NAIPAC team, we do have a community advisory group of parent leaders. And when we ask them for their ideas and how we could do this, these are some of the ideas that they came up with. So designing spaces with contributions from local Native American artists at our new summit building, possibly placing plants that are native to Kalapuya people in the green spaces surrounding the new building, having a bench made of cedar dedicated to the Kalapuya people, and maybe hanging the nine federally recognized tribal flags next to the Oregon and US flags in the boardroom at the new summit building. So these are suggested actions. And that brings us to our presentation. So Massey, thank you so much for your time. I'm going to turn it over to Shelley and her team, who will present us with an awesome video. And so...
Susan has a question.
Yes, Susan?
All of a sudden, my computer was doing somewhere. You know, we heard how many students are, you know, we think, you know, over 10,000 is what I heard. And then we think 500 that identify with a certain amount of tribes that are that, whatever, I'm sorry for asking that way. How many teachers, how many staff members is really my question? Do we have, do we know how many affiliate with a tribe?
That's a very good question. I believe we tried to, go ahead, Brandon, did you want to unmute? I think we tried to pull that data.
Yeah, it's, I think, anywhere about 100 classified and certified that self-identify, but beyond that, it's tough because also, you know, there's people that are marked incorrectly that are staff, just because when people got hired, sometimes people would assume their identity. So it's hard to know with our data with staff as well, and the pack could probably speak to that a little bit better, but I don't want to throw anybody around. Thank you.
Brandon, I can add, Susan, just to clarify, it is based on our, it's based on information that staff disclose themselves upon hire. And so it's, we can't be guaranteed that it's, that our information is perfectly accurate, but it is based on identification. I don't have the number handy, but with your permission, I would love to look into that and see where we are in terms of representation.
A great question, thank you.
To clarify, Susan, there's 10,437 estimated Native American population within Washington County.
Washington, sorry.
And our present, indigenous presently, our number stands at 12% of our student population, which is about 3,512.
Thank you.
Thank you to our team that helped put this together, and Massey, thank you.
Massey. So I think we want to round this out by honoring this day and letting our students have a voice in it. So we want to present you with this video.
My name is Madison Loane. I am a senior at Westview High School, and I'm also part of the Early College High School program. I have pretty distinct memories of trying to sneak down here with my friends because it was a really cool, quiet, foresty spot that not many students went. I came here sometimes in my free time by myself and I would just hang out when I wasn't in the school. I've been walking down here on the boardwalk a couple of times, and this is the first time I've actually been to this spot in about three years. I am a descendant of a tribal member. We are members of the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribe of the Flathead Indian Reservation. It's located in Montana. I don't know much about the tribe itself because the history just isn't really there. These earrings, I made these last night, actually, because I wanted a cool bead piece to wear for this video. Beadwork was something I picked up over quarantine because, you know, I finally had time to actually connect to my culture. As a native student, I do think it is important to feel valued. Considering I didn't know much about Columbus until I took APUS History last year, it was definitely something I was always blind to. Columbus Day wasn't really a holiday that I knew about. It was just, oh, cool, day off of school. That's pretty cool. And then when I learned about what happened and, you know, the absolute genocide that Native American peoples as a whole went through, I don't think he was a person to be celebrated. I think, though, there has been a lot of support on social media with people switching over to calling it Indigenous Peoples' Day. It feels good to be recognized. It feels good that genocide did not go unheard of, and it feels good that people know what happened in the past and acknowledge that, and acknowledge that what happened wasn't okay. You know, indigenous people, we're still here. You know, after all these years, we're still here, and we're still trying to continue our cultural practices. And I think that's something that should be recognized outside of just a day.
I think Madison says it all, and I have nothing to add. So, Tom?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for a beautiful presentation. Gary, Toshiko, Karen, Brandon, Shelley. I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Oh, Pat, we really appreciate it. The next portion of our board meeting are going to be operations and support strategic plans. There is a lot of information to get through here, board members, probably is evident from your board packet that we all were reading this weekend. I'm asking that board members hold their questions until the person has finished their part of the report they're going to give us. And that will help us kind of move through this information efficiently, so that we have time to hear everybody today. So we'll start off with Matt on our energy and resource report.
Actually, I will kick it off there, Tom.
Okay, go for it, Carl.
All right. Good afternoon, Superintendent Grodding, Chair Colette and School Board Members. Thank you for having us. And as Tom said, a significant amount of information is included in your packet, made for a lot of great reading, I'm sure, over the course of the weekend. So we thank you very much for you taking the time to prepare yourself for this afternoon. You're going to have the opportunity here from, I believe, six different people, or seven different people this afternoon regarding eight different areas of the operations and support services side of the district. As Tom said, each person will be provided about a minute and a half to two minutes at the beginning of each one. Our intent is not to go over our board reports with you. We fully expect that you've already prepared yourself with that information. What they will be doing is adding some other elements to that report. Each member will take about two minutes or so to highlight some of the aspects of the work that they're currently engaged. And we're going to do that with each and every single member. Before we move forward with questions, we'll allow all seven of those individuals to go forward first. Excuse me. Sorry, my computer just started to decide to buffer on me. One more. Sorry, my computer just started to decide to buffer on me. One more. So after each individual has finished with their comments, we'll continue to move forward and we'll go in the same order that's on your agenda so that you can follow along where we're at. The intent is not to cut questions off, but to be able to engage in a back and forth question dialogue opportunity that we've done for the last two years. And the board has enjoyed that type of presentation because it just allows for a natural exchange based on questions that you have. And they can be questions about what's in the board reports or any aspect of the work in which these team members are involved. So first off, I want to thank all of them for their hard work in preparing these reports in addition to being prepared for today. So with that, we will go ahead and kick off and Josh will begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Colette, Board members. My name is Josh Gamas, Chief Facilities Officer. I have a few opening remarks about facilities in general, and then I will cover energy and resource conservation on behalf of Matt Lipton Fells. Matt is our Energy Program Manager, and he's out this week. So I will again be covering his section. The response to COVID-19 continues to be a priority of effort for all of our staff who fall under the facilities umbrella, which includes maintenance, custodial, energy, and the bond team. And you will hear from Nathan Potter, Aaron Boyle, and others later. I want to focus about communication and what we have done and what we continue to do in our facilities, especially at this time because it's involving everyone's safety and health as we navigate COVID-19. So a couple of of our communication practices that we'll highlight include, back in February of 2021, we put together a fifteen page memo on the district's HVAC operations and modifications in response to COVID-19. Nathan Potter, Administrator for Maintenance Services, and our HVAC foreman Brent Tolliver, reviewed guidance from ASHRAE, which is the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning, as well as Healthy Buildings for Health, CDC, and ODE. And in that document, the the success there is that we were able to focus on a quantitative measure of ventilation, which I'm very proud of, and we have shared that with other districts as we moved forward in this COVID response, again, specifically tied to ventilation. Another area that we had communication success, we set expectations for our custodial practices in our buildings, for our teaching staff and our custodial staff, when a custodian will disinfect, what they will disinfect, how they are doing it. We did that just to set expectations again for not only for our teaching staff, but for our staff. And and that was a great success. And here recently, we experienced a number of power outages which impacted ventilation in our buildings, power outages from PGE. And so because in response to that, we developed a standard operating procedure, an SOP, for what the district will do and what the schools will do in response for loss of power. All the information that I just talked about, communication is available on our Intranet page. I fully recognize that everyone is busy, especially our building staff, and there's a lot of information coming to them. So we do our best to ensure that the latest information is readily available. And always they can call, email POCs if they have any questions. Looking ahead for the coming year, my focus areas continue to be transparency to our district staff on priorities of work, available resources to do the work. Our team is limited resources, but they do a phenomenal job with what we have. So that's my overview kicking it off. Again, Matt Lipton Fells is not here available, but he is our program manager. In the future, I'll look for an opportunity for, especially for our new board members to meet Matt. He is a phenomenal expert in energy. And so if you had a chance to look at his board report, he talked about his focus on system investment upgrades using Senate Bill 1149, SB 1149, and Energy Trust of Oregon, ETO. SB 1149 is a public purchase charge where 3% of the total revenue from PGE and Pacific Power is taken from their from their revenues. The first 10% of that 3%, I know there's a lot of information, but just to kind of give you a background, the first 10% of that 3% is provided to a school district to perform energy audits and implement energy efficiency measures in our schools, and Matt is responsible for that program. ETO is a nonprofit organization committed to helping us improve our clean energy improvements in our buildings, and they they provide funding for energy audits and incentives. Matt works closely with our maintenance and our bond team. He utilizes that SB 1149 ETO. He adds efficient HVAC boilers, rooftop units, air handler upgrades, LED lighting systems, all those are outlined in his report. Another area that I want to cover on for the energy was our year end final for the 2020 2021 utility usage and cost summary. And in there, Matt uses our energy manager program to look at the usage reduction that we had for electricity, for natural gas, for water, and irrigation. There were cost savings in that school year because of COVID and not having staff and personnel in our buildings. However, I will note that moving forward, our systems are working harder, ventilation, we have increased hours, and so we will start to see increased cost in our utilities. And that's the summary for for the energy.
Board members, any questions about the energy report?
If we could hold all questions until the end.
Okay.
Each member has gone through and just gave opening comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Colette and Board members. My name is Aaron Boyle. I'm the Administrator for Facilities Development. So I just want to talk quickly about what we've been doing. We are approaching the end of our bond program from the 2014 bond. So at this point, we have completed all major projects, and we are working on completing several additional projects that have been added. And then some of the remaining maintenance projects, largely roofing and HVAC work that was spread out over the eight years. But everything's going really well. The program is well on track to finish very strong. We are in the process of transitioning towards planning for a future bond, something that I believe is later on the agenda tonight, and you'll get to hear more about. Notable projects this summer that we completed, Akma was the large one, successfully opened Akma. Tumwater, after being used as a swing school for the last several years, has now been opened as a middle school. We completed a large seismic upgrade this summer at Cooper Mountain, and then the first phase of seismic upgrade at Bethany. So all sorts going on. Moving towards planning projects for next summer, a lot of concern out there with market conditions and some of these supply chain issues that we're all hearing a lot about. Really incredible, some of the lead times we're seeing for HVAC units and roofing materials. So we're really trying to get ahead of it for next summer as much as possible. And with that, I will be available for questions once we finish up here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Potter. I'm the head of Maintenance and Custodial for the school district. Most of my comments are captured in the board, but just to call a few pieces out, the work we take on continues to expand. And the example most specifically we're dealing with right now is THPRD turning proper or our property maintenance back over to us since they can't schedule the fields. I don't know if you got to see the K Tu article, but we're continually looking for opportunity to lower our costs and increase our levels of service, and that was a wonderful collaboration. We were able to get planned. As Josh alluded to HVAC priorities, we continue to focus on ventilation over comfort. I know that probably means some frustrating phone calls from customers. But we were in a in a grace period between seasons. I think we're going to shift from heat issues to cool issues as we continue to bring the massive amount of outside air in. COVID has definitely impacted the work we do in the department. We took on a little over 8,040 work orders this past year, which is about a 66% reduction from the previous year before COVID sat on us. Unfortunately, for us, the buildings were never really empty, so that kind of prevented us being able to really capitalize on the availability of the space between CDL and having teaching staff, hybrid, summer school. It has been a challenge to compete with the users of our facilities to maintain our facilities. Looking at custodial, hiring has been our center of gravity right there. We are doing a phenomenal job trying to put team on board. It allows us to make sure absences don't impact us severely. But there has been a significant priorities refocus, refocus, lunch support, disinfection. And it's created some frustration both with our customers and with our custodial team that are trying their best to provide the highest level of care, and they have to extend the rotation of certain cleaning tasks. We're looking at every opportunity to reintroduce those as we can, but trying to make sure we're meeting the immediate needs of the building. Contracted services, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get numbers into that report because that team is working very, very hard, and the person that does that is working on the tenage issue for the district. But to give you some order of magnitude there that we've taken on a little over 700 contracted services projects as well as 83 FIPS of to the tune of about 2.77 million dollars. Currently have 33 FIPS active with a backlog of 35. So we're doing our best to stay up while also making sure we're addressing the priorities. Just want to share that the whole department is fully engaged in managing COVID in our schools, hoping to set the conditions so that the active attending school is not a source for communities bred. And I'll take your questions at the end.
Good afternoon, Chair Colette, members of the school board. My name is Steven Sparks. I'm the Executive Administrator for Long Range Planning. And I'd like just to call out a couple of accomplishments from the past year, that being the middle school boundary adjustment process and the update to and creation of a new long range facilities plan. Looking forward, our three main subjects that we're going to be focused on are one, facility use and striving a balance between the demand on our facilities as well as working with our maintenance team and making sure that our facilities are still well taken care of, but there is an undue burden placed on our maintenance teams. Second, we're paying very close attention to enrollment and our demographics in the district. As we have talked about before, we are no longer a growing district and in growing in the sense of enrollment. So we're paying very close attention to that. And then third, and perhaps most importantly, is preparing for the next capital bond that we will be bringing to you at upcoming meetings. With that, I will turn over to the next person in line.
Good afternoon, Chair Colette and School Board members. I'm Charity Rawls. I'm the Administrator for Nutrition Services. And I just want to highlight a little bit about our current meal service. So this year, we are using waivers from USDA to operate the Seamless Summer Option Program, which allows for free reimbursable breakfast and lunch for all students. The Seamless Summer Option is different from the program we've been running since the start of the pandemic, which was the Summer Food Service Program. The SSO allows us to provide meals for all students as well as following a stricter meal pattern, which is closer to the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program. There are stricter nutrition requirements related to fruits and vegetables, whole grain rich requirements, and eating minimum and maximum calories. As I said, we're focusing our services on students attending in person. And again, those breakfasts and lunches. But we are also having meals available for flex online students. We are also partnering with THPRD to support after school supper programs at five locations, and then also supporting three other programs within the district for supper programs. We are daily serving an average of 5,500 breakfasts and about 18,500 to 19,500 lunches. This is approximately a 20% increase above pre pandemic meal service levels. And while we're very excited that we're regularly serving almost half of all of the students and Beaverton School District, we are doing that while severely short staffed. Currently, we have 24 open positions, and if we were able to staff for the meal counts we are currently serving, we would probably add an additional 10 positions on top of that. We also have a fairly minimal sub pool at this point in time. Additionally, as I think Aaron already mentioned, and as you've probably seen in the news, we have been severely impacted by supply chain issues. We have been shorted on more than half of all of our food items, from tortillas to juice, corn to fish sticks. We're also having shortages on our service ware, so any paper boats that we are able to serve things into and portion things up into as well as our forks and spoons for service ware. So we expect regularly that we will be having menu changes ongoing, and we have communicated that already with families. The supply chain issues are expected to last through the end of the school year. I look forward to any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair Colette, School Board members and Superintendent Grodding. Thank you for taking time this afternoon to hear from the Operations Services Departments. My name is Rick Pointe, and I'm the Director of Public Safety for Beaverton School District. Our main focus here is to maintain a safe and secure educational environment for our students and staff and a safe and welcoming atmosphere for our community. As you may imagine, the Public Safety Department is a reactive entity within the district, providing support and resources to ensure that we address all safety matters in a prompt and responsible manner, with the end result being the safety of all. For the past 19 months, the Public Safety Department has worked in collaboration with many of our operations departments to address the impact that COVID has had on our district. Public Safety has been working on addressing many of these ripple effects of COVID, such as school building and property security, mobile patrol presence on our campuses, assisting district staff with public access and building access and building security during our comprehensive distance learning. And at the onset of COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic, as it was previously mentioned, even though we've been hit with COVID-19 pandemic, our buildings have not been empty. And so we have needed to continue to ensure their safety and security throughout throughout the pandemic. And we also continue to assist teaching and learning, most recently through the summer school staffing program this summer in support of the educational needs of our students. Public Safety has continued to address the ripple effects of COVID-19 that which has had on our students, addressing issues such as an increase, I should say, in issues such as social media bullying and safety threats, social media sex related incidents, social media criminal acts, teen suicides and threats of suicides, along with collaboration with Safe Oregon Tip Line. We continue to see an increase of child abuse calls, student controlled substance abuses and overdoses, an increase of number of fights and other calls for service, and in the responsive service of our first responders to include police, fire, and medical. All of these have been a ripple effect of COVID throughout impacting our students, staff, and community as a whole. As long as we continue to be challenged by the impacts of COVID, I believe our district will continue to see the issues impact student, staff, and community. Our Public Safety Department, along with our collaborative partners, are committed to ensure that the proper resources and services are provided to our students and staff in an equitable and prompt manner. Public Safety continues to seek the full support of our school board in the provision of the resources needed to accomplish this in the coming years for the safety of all. So I just wanted to take this time to thank you for your time, and I really look forward to meeting our new school board members in person someday soon. So thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Craig Bieber. I'm the Administrator for Transportation for the District. Wanted to take a moment just to touch a few bases. For 2021, we had one third less operating expense in our department, which is the prior year, which was to be expected. We carried about for hybrid, we carried about 10% of our regular ed students, but we carry almost half of our special ed students during the hybrid. The biggest thing I wanted to talk about is hiring, hiring and retention. That's last year was it was a very hot topic, and this year it's it's critical. In 2021, we had a 14% turnover rate, which is on par with our five year average. So the amount of people leaving us was about the same. From a hiring standpoint, though, looking at last year and this year, we average through October 15th, from the beginning of the, from July 1st through October 15th, for the last five years, we've averaged 14 people being added, 14 added drivers and losing 16 people. This year, right now, however, we've added 15 people, but we've lost 21. So we've had 30% increase in the number of people lost this year versus our average. The number of routes, discounting the pandemic year, 1920, the last four years we had, we had 240 routes. This year, we had 208 routes. So we had a 13% reduction in the number of routes and consolidations. We continue We continue to do that now and we've pretty much maxed out where we're at. We're down to about two hundred and five routes now, two hundred and four routes. And we've pretty much squeezed everything we can out at this point. It takes about eight weeks for our drivers to, from the time we offer somebody a job to the time they are become a certified bus driver, it takes about eight weeks and that's about the five-year average. So that's on par with it. And then lastly, to give you an idea of how we're meeting, we've been, we've worked very, very hard not to replicate the situations in Portland public. We're in Hillsborough with respect to failure of service. We have not had a service failure yet and intend to have that. All of our schools, we're offering full service to all of our schools every single day. We have had some late problems in the morning and in the afternoon, but that's the more function of traffic, specifically parent traffic than anything else. But to give you an idea, we are averaging, well, right now we have twenty unfilled routes right now, twenty open routes today as we speak, and seven spare positions open. And with spare positions, normally we have twenty-seven, we have twenty people. We use those spare positions to cover attendance, regular attendance attrition, people out being sick and that kind of thing. Right now, those twenty spares are covering the twenty open routes that we have because we have the driver shortage. So we're having our staff, my staff, dispatchers, routers, supervisors, myself, sometimes shop people. We are covering those daily absences. So we're averaging so far from the beginning of school, twenty-one staff members a day driving. Fridays, however, that that's we're averaging twenty-seven staff members a day. To give you an idea, the maximum number of people we could have driving in Stolar operations, we can give a dispatcher in each building and one person in the shop. The maximum we have is thirty-four people, thirty-four staff people can drive, that can drive. If we throw the shop out of it, just in so that we have our shop as staff for breakdowns and the continued work, I've got twenty staff people that can drive. So you can see on Fridays, we are stretched to the limit. We're averaging twenty-seven people and we only have twenty-eight people to get. So we are hard at work hiring people. We spent incredible amount of money last year and this year, hiring people using billboards, electronic billboards. We've gone on to television ads. We're going to continue to drive our television ads and we're advertising every single day. We're interviewing almost all of it. We have eight people. I'm sorry, we have, yes, we have eight people right now that are currently training and they will become certified. And we would have two this week all the way, all the way through Thanksgiving. Those eight people will be coming online. And I have another six people on deck, ready to start training. Essentially, those people won't be of use to us essentially until probably January. So that's a quick overview and where we're at. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Tom, back to you.
Right. Board members, any questions? Sunita and then Karen.
I have a question for Mr. Porter. Thank you. Lot of information. And this question may be just a clarification question. You mentioned that the maintenance for the fields is being taken over by the BSD because THPRD is not being able to. Is that correct? Right?
Correct.
Yeah. So my question is that there are some schools where there are points of entries, which may be like a safety issue. Is that, does that come in maintenance or does that come in like fencing and stuff if a school needs that for the security of the children? What, where does that, who takes the responsibility of that?
It's kind of a Josh and Nathan kind of responsibility. The new fencing infill and some of our safety standards, we've identified needed needing lockable gates. When you take fifty-three campuses that are going to need those gates or infill type of discussions, it turns into a very large dollar figure, far exceeds the ability of my budget to shoulder. So I turn to Josh and
Maybe Josh can answer.
Bring my cup in hand and hopefully he's got it.
Well, thank you for at least doing the maintenance because that's a big thing too.
It is. It is a collaborative process and Aaron's team is actually wading into it as a district project as well. And we're, we're in the process of closing those gaps in our fence throughout the district.
So, so maybe the question to Josh would be that even though the land belongs to THPRD, but we will be taking care of the fencing and the points of entry so that the students are safe?
It belongs to us. The land belongs to us.
Okay.
We have, we have an agreement, Sunita, with the THPRD and because of their staffing, their reductions, that they didn't have the ability to be able to maintain the property for us. So then we, now it falls back on us for maintenance. And so we, it was a great relationship. You know, we continue to work with them and strengthen that relationship, but they had their staff reductions that, that then threw it back on us to be able to maintain. There is a project going to the fencing itself. Aaron and the Bond Accountability Committee, we did program reserve project where we took program reserve and now we're upgrading our cameras. We've got fencing as part of the security upgrades. We did wall improvement. So we looked at that as a gap in projects and we have identified a source to take care of some, not all, but some of the fencing requirements that we need. And that'll be handled through the bond.
Do you have any timeline, like when the, at least for some of the schools, you guys will be taking care of it?
Yeah, great question. So we are, we have been designing that for the last few months. So over the course of this school year, we will be installing the first round of upgraded fencing at schools.
So Aaron, just from a time perspective, we're looking probably next summer, right? It'll be a summer project.
This, this first round, we'll be doing it over the school year.
Oh, during the school year.
And it's easy to do. It's out of the way. But that's only some schools. It'll be done phases. So I, you know, I can put together a schedule showing more information on how.
So let us do that for you. Let us put together some more information and we can get that info to you. Oh, Sunita, did you have more? Okay. Then Karen, Ugana, Susan, Becky and Eric.
So thank you. First, I feel like we all need to just take a breath, like just for all the work that y'all put together and for our team. Like, it's just amazing to see all of the HVAC work that has been done to keep our students safe. And to see, you know, with the short staff that you all have to be able to do that work. I want, I visited zone two, I visited, I'm in zone two and I visited the seismic work that was done at Bethany during the summer. And then again, it's amazing how deep that all goes and how much goes into it. I wanted to, Steve, on your part of facilities and looking at the childcare pieces, it's not really a question, just kind of a comment with looking at how we're going to be collaborating with our community to increase the childcare piece. For example, with Talton Hills Park and Rec, I heard, you know, us say that we have good relationship with them. I'd love to, you know, maybe not at this time, but later learn more about how we're collaborating with them in sharing our facilities and, and how we're doing that piece with the nutrition services. A huge thank you to our nutrition staff. It's just amazing the work that's being done with the shortages and all those different pieces that are happening. Thank you for filling out that extra paperwork, Ms. Rawls, for getting more of our schools to qualify for the free breakfast and lunch for more of our kids. I understand, like, we have the long lines. We can't have our no supper program right now. The delay in the fresh fruits and vegetable program and we're short on supplies. And we aren't able to get the quarantine meals to our students. So I know that we're working hard to do all those pieces and I continue to worry about that quarantine piece. And how are we going to retain our staff, our busing staff, our custodial staff? Are we doing, thinking about bonuses and staffing, you know, pieces for that? I know that our Muslim students, when, when I was working with some of our nutrition staff, that if we go away from the plastic silverware into the metal silverware, there's that, we can't always keep the metal, you know, free of pork and we can't so it'd be important to have some plastic silverware around and let students know that that's available for that piece. And then with respect to public safety, sorry, it's a lot of paper and a lot of, where is our, let me stand up. Rick, sorry, Rick, Mr. Pointes, there is a section in the, in your report on page two that talks about not being able to provide training for your staff because it's COVID time. And I just wanted to ensure that, you know, there, in the reports, when the students spoke to you last year and when there was the report that came out, there was a lot of training needs that your staff needed with culturally responsive practices and some of the anti-bias training. And so I was actually very surprised to see that you said because of COVID, you can't provide, you know, training to them. And I'm thinking all of our staff is receiving training through Zoom. And so I would want to hear, maybe hear back, if you are providing that training, maybe next time, can you give me a report of what trainings you're providing for them to make them more culturally responsive to our students? Because I was surprised by that on page two of your, of the report. But again, thank you everybody for all of your work. I know you're short-staffed and I appreciate everything that you're all doing and, and for our staff as well.
Aaron, if I could, Superintendent Grodding, if I could just pitch in on one thing, we do have, when you talk about after school programming and childcare, we do have a meeting set up with THPRD and I believe also the city as there could be some funding provided by the county that could come down and we're trying to set a meeting up and see if there's possible, possibility for collaboration there. So that meeting's coming soon and, and in the hopes that our county will have some more money to distribute.
And Steve, how many, how many schools do we currently have with after school care?
Um, I'll have to go back and look, but of the, of all the elementary schools, I believe we're at we're like twenty-eight, I think.
Okay, so twenty-eight of the thirty-four at the present time.
Yeah. If you give me a moment, I'll look it up right now.
There was an email that came to us with actual numbers in which schools, that's last week, that was helpful to look at. And as we look at how these are different buildings, I was thinking also about, as we get closer, I know Carl, you're working on this part of how we're going to make our buildings available for and coordinating all of the vaccines once our K or five through twelve or our K of five through eleven-year-olds are, can have that access. So I look forward to that information too.
Right. Ugana, Susan, Becky and then Eric.
Just quick update, I was wrong by one. It's twenty-seven.
So thank you everyone. I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into preparing all the various reports. A lot of information right there. And my first question would be on nutrition. It's more like a confirmation. I was reading about, you know, how families were served last year during the CDL on crop side pickup. And I was wondering what changed between that time and now that made it difficult to serve students in quarantine. And my assumption is the reduction in staff. Is that correct, Charity? Okay. And then my, my, I want to touch on, Karen was talking about the metal colorings. And I was wondering if that is going to be time and cost effective? Is it going to be reusable? Or is this something that has to be cleaned each time students use them? So I'm just wondering how that piece is gonna play out for them? Just wondering if it's going to be reusable or not. In the area of public safety, Rick, I was wondering, how do you determine how many campus supervisors to put in each school? Because the report showed some schools had three, four, and some had one. I was just wondering, how do you determine which schools get, you know, how many supervisors that each school gets? And also, are these supervisors uniformed? Just wondering how that, what that looks like, if the supervisors are uniformed. And also, how do you determine how many to put on each campus? And then my next question would be.
I apologize. We can pause and we can allow each one of these individuals to answer their questions for you if you'd like. So we can go back to Charity's question, the question you had for Charity.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure. So with regards to the silverware, yes, it would be reusable. And we, pre-pandemic, had started to roll that out at some of our elementary schools. So these would be used and then washed in between each use. So we were trying to implement that at some of our elementaries. We've gone back to a few of them just to save on some of our plasticware. And again, that's at sites that can support that. And that is additional, usually additional time that's required to wash and then sort that. So sites that can take that on, we're encouraging them to move that direction. And if they have support from their administration to do that as well.
And I was just wondering if I might chime in about the lack of meals for quarantine students. This was new information today that we just approved the use of our community resource funds here in the Communications and Community Involvement Department. So we're going to be purchasing five hundred and twenty thirty-dollar gift cards that will be distributed to quarantining students who need additional support. So those are, will be grocery cards that go out to their families that help supplement. And so we hope to have that rolled out in the next probably two or three weeks.
And Rick, if you want to go back to Ugana's first question regarding determination of the number of campus supervisors by saying.
Yes. So I believe coming here to the district about four years ago, that was all budget-based determination. And I'm, I'm sorry, budget-based, but also a student enrollment-based. And so if a student enrollment declined at a certain school level, then that would also decline some of the support staffing as our campus supervisors are considered classified staff. So we recently had an issue where some enrollment at one of our schools actually dropped it down from three campus supervisors to two. In my conversation with Deputy Superintendent Mead, we are actually working to establish what we would call minimum standards, something that would match and meet the needs of our district overall. And also at the same time, looking at the equity stance of it, as you notice, not all schools are covered with a campus supervisor. I mean, unfortunately, the student behaviors are really start middle school, high school. I mean, they're at every level. And so we are looking at what would a minimum standard be? An equitable approach to it, you know, looking through that lens as well. So that, that is something already that we are looking to establish. And then I believe you also mentioned if they were uniformed, was that the, did I understand that correctly? Yeah. So they are not uniformed. They do have a polo shirt that says public safety. Not all of them are displaying that right now. It's been, for some that remember, we had a Stolar incident, an incident up at Stolar where we had to deploy reunification and a few years ago. From the feedback from that, our community was asking public safety, why is, why are our security, campus security not visible or identifiable to the community? And so we moved to a simple polo shirt to say public safety. It's another project that we're looking at because I think it's important because they are trained, they're certified through the state, they're trained in first aid, in security. You know, we're also looking at medical training, added medical training besides first aid due to some recent controlled substance impacts to our community and the impact to our youth. So definitely something we want to continue to grow our professionalism. And I believe part of that professionalism is presence and a visual support perception to our community. So we, we are working on that as we speak. So.
Thank you, Rick. May I continue with my questions or? Okay. So my next question is, is in line with transportation. My question is, do drivers, are there, are drivers required to have a commercial driving license before they are offered employment? Or is this something that they can fulfill? Is this a requirement they can fulfill on the job? Maybe that could make it easier to hire more drivers who don't necessarily have that commercial license. I'm just wondering, is this something that they must have before an offer of employment is made? Or is this something that they can get while unemployed? Thank you.
We do not have any requirement of any kind of licensing before they come to workforce. In fact, the vast, pardon me, the vast majority of our applicants do not have commercial licenses. We train them. That eight weeks involves them taking the, getting materials. We help them study for their written test to get their commercial driver's permit for the DMV. And then once they have that permit, then we bring them in and start training them behind the wheel of a bus. That takes about five weeks normally to do that with all that training. So in fact, we, we, there is a requirement. there is no requirement. It it is only somebody is over twenty-one and uh has ability to get a driver's license. They, you know, we will accept them.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Great. Um, then Susan, Becky, and Eric.
If I can unmute. Um, so thank you so much for the presentation. I always appreciate, you know, um, the hard work that all of you put in, especially the last over a year and a half during these really difficult covid times. And um and a lot of you dealing with uh shortages, uh whether it's staff shortages and obviously in our nutrition services, it's getting uh supplies in. So I totally appreciate what you do. And I'm Shelley, I have to say I'm very happy to hear that we, there's funding to help students that might have nutritional needs that aren't being met because they're in quarantine. So thank you for letting us know that. So my question um is to Rick. Um, I heard the words that most of our um SROs, it's a reactive versus proactive um situation. And I want to know how we swap it from being reactive to being more proactive. So that's one of my questions. And then I guess this would be kind of matching with it. And I know this is difficult um because the fund, you know, we need funding. But, you know, I see a tie-in between, you know, our SROs, our security and mental health support for so many of our students. And I mean, again, I know that's a matter of, you know, how many we have and how many years staff we have, but I I just think we need to be looking through that lens as well. And I didn't see that or hear that. And I think it's such a priority.
Hey, I thank you, uh Chairman Greer for that. Uh, I I think you're absolutely right. Uh it is, I've always said, uh, public safety is a reactive entity. And we should always have a proactive mentality to move uh forward, right? Uh, it's always responding to crisis. Part of that is that preparation for crisis. And so that's where uh I think one of the big issues we're facing right now is staffing, right? Staffing for many departments. But that becomes a reality as well for our um as you mentioned, our school resource officers. We have seen since covid began, we've seen an increase in child abuse calls, uh teen suicide, uh tips coming into state Oregon, and a lot of the and social media threats and so forth, so on. A lot of those calls require our SROs to make those home visits. And unfortunately, our numbers of SROs are down. And so when we, when you're servicing fifty-four schools, forty thousand plus students, and the the ripple effects of covid on the emotional and mental uh aspect of it, it is very, very tough uh when the staffing is low. I'm very encouraged that our district has moved forward to uh bring on uh social workers and counselors to help address some of that at the school level. And so that's that collaborative partnership that we're looking at um to hope, hopefully uh with that collaboration that's taking place, we can start to uh dive into more of meeting the needs, the emotional, mental needs of our students and some of the social interactions that we're having to respond to. So part of that's the staffing and then, of course, also continual training um for all those three entities.
And I have a follow-up, follow-up question to that, just, you know, from my personal experience. Unfortunately, my daughter experienced um I hate to categorize it like this, but a hate crime last week where an individual um verbally um abused her because she's Asian and then threw a rock at her car. And we had to, you know, call out the sheriff to report it. Um, and I'm just, my concern is that more of our students are experiencing things like that from the public. And, you know, how we help support our students in general to feel safe in schools and outside of schools.
Well, part of that is, uh, again, the staffing aspect, uh, are, I know that in uh weekly meetings with our SROs, uh, they are too, like many of us in in the district, feeling overwhelmed with the 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 increase in the needs and the calls for service. Uh, there, there's just many of that. And so staffing becomes a a big issue for that. Uh, but it's also a shifting in the culture. I think the covid, a- and again, I hate blaming covid for everything, but the ripple effects of that changing the the mental, emotional uh well-being of our students under, under this pandemic uh creates other challenges. Um, and so our SROs go through that training uh through CIT training to help uh in be involved and respond to stress management and emotional behaviors and mental health behaviors. Uh, so there's training that has taken place and we continue to work in collaboration with them. Uh, it's just, it's going to take uh more resources. I I and I'm just going to put it out there. It's going to take more resources and service and collaboration to continue to shift the culture from a reactive response to more of a proactive response. And so um, that is our goal, uh, but we still have a lot of work to do. So.
So one last question, because, you know, it pops up. Is there anything as a school board we can do to help with the collaboration to help move this along so that our students feel safe in school?
Yeah, there, there is, I believe that that is a conversation that are uh my, my uh Deputy Superintendent and, uh, you know, Deputy Superintendent Grodding and myself would be a good conversation for us to have uh with uh, uh, the board uh as we continue to move forward. So.
Yeah, yes, this is Dawn. So I think it's a, I think it's a multitude of things. Um, as you said, you know, we're so fortunate now. We've got some ESSER funding and SIA funding and we've, we've um committed heavily to the social, emotional aspect. One of the things that I'm incredibly nervous about is what happens when some of this money goes away because the needs of our students aren't going to be going away. And I think the one thing that this board and other school boards in Oregon can do is really help us uh advocate to our legislature that these services are needed. We just had a uh had a meeting today with a, it's kind of an off-the-record meeting with uh superintendents. And they talked about the upcoming legislative session that's going to take place. And school boards um, staff are very nervous throughout Oregon uh because these, you know, we're not going to fix covid. The needs of covid or the needs of our students in one or two years. And now we're getting used to some of these services. And when they go away, it will be devastating for some of our most marginalized and vulnerable students. So I think what school boards can be doing right now, and and you're right there, you're in, you're in the mix with OSBA, as is Becky on the legislative side, and actually all of you, um, is we, I think we need to start talking about that right now. Um, uh, the funding in Oregon, our unemployment continues to drop and those coffers continue to go up. But there's going to be lots of competing interest, as there always is when it comes to a uh e- either a short session or or a major session. And I think it's going to behoove all of us to just uh absolutely advocate for those dollars. David, I don't know if you want to hop in here, but there's some, there's some real fear out there that they believe that, hey, K-12 education has enough money to continue to go on. And as some of these resources come, start coming up, I think it's, it it, we're going to be placed in a incredibly difficult position. School boards, staff, everyone, and most of all of our students.
Becky and then Eric.
Uh, Superintendent Grodding kind of took uh some of the, the question I was going to fit. First, I have a statement. Um, in the six years we've been getting these reports, um, you had all full-time jobs. Um, and it's, it's unbelievable the amount of of items that you oversee now with covid and um, not having enough supplies, you've had to take on another full-time job. And I I want to thank all of you in running your departments and working with your staff uh and your innovation and al- always keeping students front and center of trying to do the best. Um, I heard Nate Potter kept talking about our customer, um, our customer, keeping our customer happy. And I I I thank you all for your dedication um and and doing uh impossible things during an impossible time. So uh, thank you for keeping the safety of our staff and students uh foremost. But my, my question was a little bit what Superintendent Grodding just said. And this might be a little bit more of a question with the help of uh Deputy Superintendent, uh Associate Superintendent Schofield, and that is uh, all of these things that you talked about that we're doing above extra, having to go out and recruit, finding other uh fill-ins for for nutrition. Um, uh, all the things that that Josh talked about that we need to keep our schools safe. I'd like to know how much of that is coming from our ESSER funds? And uh, when we will see a tracking uh of that? Because as superintendent, I am very worried about the needs aren't even going to come close to when the ESSER funds uh the, and we don't have it and moving forward with all our different expenses. So I'm just wondering how we'll get from an operational standpoint, how we're spending those ESSER funds to meet, to meet the needs for for of our students.
You're correct, Becky. There, and in fact, we're meeting on that today. We're going to come to the school board in late October and share with you where ESSER dollars have gone. Uh, and the planned spending for the next three years. So you can take a look at what's uh where we're at and what we're spending funds on. But you're, you're correct that these are ones, as well as Superintendent Grodding, these are one-time funds at this time. And as we spend them, um we don't have anything to backfill.
Eric?
All right, I have uh two questions. Um, I'm always on the business mindset slant, but um one of them was like, I noticed that like, you know, you utilities and everything dropped like six hundred fifty thousand-ish. And I imagine that's because we had the mothball schools when you couldn't use them last year. And I think that makes sense. Will that data be usable if like, uh, if we're looking at like future projections on like um consolidation of schools? And what's the lowest possible cost to keep something, an asset running? Is that something that you guys use on the facility side?
We are going to look at that, Eric. I think, you know, an opportunity based on what data we looked at using Energy Manager. Um, you know, as we make decisions, we do analysis, we can continue to leverage that information. Um, we know EUI, energy usage decks, we know um other factors that are involved in that. But I, I think it's just, you know, something in our analysis that we can, you know, another tool for our toolbox to be able to look at moving forward.
Okay. It's like, it was nice to see that savings, but obviously it would be nice to have kids in classrooms and using all the utilities and electricity and consumption of stuff to have a full classroom.
And like I mentioned, Eric, earlier, we, we do expect the um the utilities decrease as we move forward. I mean, we're already seeing it now. And uh, so we'll be tracking it, you know, from that aspect of of our utility usage. Okay. Because our, our systems are running longer.
Eric, I would also add to that, that um, as Josh, Josh knows this, and I think we all know it, on the horizon, even for our own households are the increase in costs overall. Uh, the rate increases, not only for water, uh, we're talking anywhere four, ten percent increases there. Electricity continuing to increase as well as gas. So we're seeing percentage increases in all three of those service areas.
Yep. Mr. Schofield's going to have some stressful planning for the next budgets. Um, so I have one more question. It's kind of, um, this is a wild card question, but I want, I want to throw it out there. It kind of affects maybe everybody. But is there any opportunity at all to use some of our resources, our, our students, maybe specifically the eighteen-year-old students and people that maybe we can use to help maybe charity on some food services or I don't, I don't imagine any kid will want to drive a bus, but crosswalk guards, um maybe custodian, uh internships, stuff like that, those directions where, you know, maybe, um, you know, as a small business person, I know that eighteen-year-olds need some training to get into the work world, the soft skills. So is there any like uh free labor we might get for credits or whatnot? Or maybe, maybe paid labor? Or is that impossible legally with um our own students?
No, I don't think it's an impossibility. Uh, I think we do have to make sure that um, first off, everything is run through risk so that gets the staff of approval. Uh, the difficulty, especially in transportation, you must be twenty-one uh to be a driver. So that's not the case. I know charity is looking at um potential resources within our own district. And charity, I don't know if you're prepared to, to share any of those thoughts?
Uh, so one of them we're working on is just a, a long-term program. I've already talked to Steve and Bear about that um with the um CTP for having students who are already volunteering, actually, from CTP at some of our schools. So at Five Oaks and McKinley and at a few other sites this year that we've added. So looking at more opportunities for those students. But then also looking long-term to have a more structured um kind of training program. And then once they've completed that, maybe getting hired on whether it's a substitute or just as a regular employee with us. So yes, we are kind of looking at those opportunities that might be out there to support our students and then also support our program.
And one thing I can add, Eric, from the custodial side, you know, taking pride in our buildings and not um uh, you know, messaging that we have to administrators and to our classroom teachers, like, you know, help with picking up at the end of the day. It's, we're in, we're in different times. And so any, any little help um goes a long way. And so we've asked for that and something that I will continue to leverage in getting student support to help do some of that pickup. Vacuuming's been impacted as part of the covid protocols. You know, we focus on disinfecting at night. We look at vacuuming now once a week because we want to disinfect all the classrooms by the end of the day. And so um I think, you know, having our students, getting them to be a part of that is something that, again, I'll continue to work on. Um, it'll be very helpful as we continue to operate in this environment.
This is Dawn. If I could, if I could add in also, and I can't remember if it was Ugana, Sunita, uh, Karin asked, uh, you know, what are some other things that we're doing to number one, not only recruit new staff members, but also to retain the great staff members that we have. And uh, our HR department and finance department, we are looking at, uh, I think somebody had mentioned the possibility of some sort of a retention bonus or or recruitment. And that is, that's in the works right now. We're, we're working with uh, uh, some of our bargaining unit representatives. But let, uh, just to let you know, that is, that is taking place right now.
And Eric, I would also, um, I know you're familiar with this. Um, we hire upwards of forty students every summer. Um, and within our paint crew as well as our move crew. Um, and benefit is they're making money. I mean, it's, you've got a student who works for us the entire summer. They can make well over four thousand dollars over the course of that summer. Um, that four thousand dollars in my pocket going into my freshman year of college would have been pretty nice.
Really good. Yeah, I like those. Anything to get them involved, that's a great thing, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good answers, yeah.
Cut around and you have one more question?
Yeah, I um, I was going to see for Mike, when you pull up how we're spending the ESSER funds and kind of working it through. I'm curious to see, we've put money for supports, mental health support for our students and um, you know, how, how, like, how many students are we able to serve this way? And just kind of giving us some of that quantitative piece so that as we can, we can make more educated um, oh my gosh, decisions around how to best serve our students' mental health needs or addiction needs um, long-term. And then the other piece, I had, when we were talking about hiring our students, um I think they would definitely want to make sure we pay them if we are going to hire them. But I had some um parents of students with um who experience, who have special needs say that um that we were using, like, helping with our life skills classes and we're using some of our students to collect recycling and other pieces like that, and that they weren't quite happy with that, or that you know, they weren't, that their student was experiencing that in a negative way. So I think as we think about some of these, how we use students, um, and thinking how we use some of our students with special needs to give them like life skill skills that we're just double-checking with parents and making sure that that we're being respectful to how the parent or the student is feeling when they're doing those jobs within a general, general education day. So I just wanted to put that out there. And the third thing was our deferred maintenance. I noticed that Nathan and a couple other of you who had, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that can get really costly if we keep deferring it. So I'm, it'd be great to know kind of how we're going to address some of those pieces.
Very important for a bond to get passed, uh, Karen. And we'll, we'll go into that in more details as we start to talk about bond planning. But that, that is very key in our, in our bond plan and our, our program.
Eric, that's a key measure. And Josh, you're absolutely right. A hundred percent of, we have to turn to a bond for most of our deferred uh maintenance. Um, we do not have a maintenance budget that can manage anything close to what we put on our deferred maintenance list. Um, it's, uh, Nathan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a little under a million dollars that we actually have um, to do repairs in our existing facilities out of the maintenance budget on an annual basis. That's woefully under, underfunded um for a district this size. So most of our items have to go to a deferred maintenance list, which means on down the road for future bond dollars. So.
I just want to say a big thank you to the whole operations and support team. This has been an incredible last year, year and a half. You guys have really stepped up to, to take care of our students and a giant thank you. I could highlight any area, but just because we only have so much time, the one area I do want to highlight is our nutrition folks. You guys kept our kids fed during a really difficult event. With low staffing, with I know extra additional work, because you have to bake up those, that food, you've got to get it out to people. You did that during times when the school was closed and on weekends, and, and we really, really appreciate all of that. That was incredible. What you did, not just for our kids, but the entire community. So a big thank you to that.
Can I add something to that? The transportation department also did, was key in getting the food out to our. Families in the community at the same time. So I just want to make sure. They're recognized too.
Thanks, Susan. The other thing that I wanted to do was, I have two questions. One is about deferred maintenance, which Karen was just talking about. When, when I'm hearing that we're having trouble getting to our PMs. That's concerning. Do we have a way of quantifying the additional cost that we're going to be seeing in later years? Because we are deferring it now and understanding what our choices are, because I think. You know, we have a lot of difficult choices. As a school board, right? We're trying to get resources into the classroom. But if we don't pay attention to some of these longer-term trends, then they bloom and become bigger problems that then take a lot of resources away from the classroom. And I'm thinking on that longer ten, twenty, thirty-year outlook, what that can do to an organization. Do we have tools for understanding that at our level, at the board level?
We are working on, it's a great, great question and comment, Tom. We are using McKinstry. McKinstry did our facilities condition assessment. We have hired them to do a engineered, engineer maintenance plan. That looks at the cost of doing business here and the gaps that we have in our deferred maintenance program. Looking at the current resources that we have, looking at our budget, looking at our staff. How we're staffed. And kind of what, what those impacts will be if we don't do the work that we need to do. So at a point in time when that document's ready, I plan to do like an FCA. Presentation similar to what it did back then and do it on the EMP. And brief you on, on what we found from that. Report and what we can look ahead to, what we need to do to better posture ourselves as a district.
Thanks, Josh. Looking forward to, to seeing that report. My second question is around seismic, because we're just getting finished with this bond, so an incredible amount of work has been done. And I'm trying to understand. From where we stand now to where we want to be, where we have. Brought our buildings up to those higher seismic standards, so you know that they can withstand a large earthquake. What does that trajectory look like in terms of where, how long is it going to take us to get there? And what are the key things that we need to be doing to make sure that we do get there?
So I'll take that, Tom. You know, my, it's. The short answer is it's really hard to say, but really the, with our plan that we have right now, it's really going to take about two bond cycles. To get our buildings up to the point where, you know, it meets the safety requirements. So it's really, it's totally dependent on the bonds. We're doing a lot of planning in terms of the bond to make sure we. We're being thoughtful about how we do the seismic upgrades. You know, it takes a combination of retro fitting buildings, but also replacing buildings that are at the end of their life and, and doing that in a thoughtful way. So you'll hear more about that, but it's definitely a big part of our bond plan that we'll be presenting soon.
The one thing that I'll, I'll add to that, Aaron, Tom, and just for your awareness, at the next bond accountability meeting. That was a request from the committee. Can we get a look at the seismic roadmap that Aaron's put together? So we'll, we'll make that presentation. I know Sunita and Eric will be there and then. Something that we can share with you offline and show you what Aaron just talked about in terms of our. The plan, looking at opportunities, looking at grants, looking at new builds and the bond. And what that looks like.
Thanks. I know that, that's such an important priority for our community's safety. And when I think about two bonds, I, the way I'm translating this, that is. That could be four different school boards, right? If school board members are serving a four-year term, that's four school boards to get to that goal. And I just want to make sure that we're continuing to educate and understand about that goal and how important that goal is to our community and our students. And I think, Dr. Mead, you had some closing comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair Colette. First and foremost, thank you, Board, for taking the time to, to have the ops team present information to you. I know that they enjoy the opportunity. To have a, just to have the exchange and interface with you. They. Are very proud of their work and they should be. They do an amazing amount of work throughout this district. I also want to compliment each and every single one of them over the course of last. Year, as many of you said, their flexibility and their ability to pivot on a dime in a moment's notice was phenomenal, truly. Just a couple of those highlights, and many of you shared those already. Nutrition Services was non-stop. We typically have an August shutdown. They continued to serve meals last year during August. They continued through winter break and they worked, continued through spring break. They were non-stop. We had staff that worked continuously for close to those eighteen months that we were in shutdown. They were exhausted by the time we got to this summer. It was huge. Public safety, Rick did an amazing job of repurposing our campus supervisors and then became mobile units and truly. Going throughout the district and checking on our sites to make sure that they weren't vandalized, that our properties were cared for. Transportation, as you know, they were delivering meals, they were delivering library books, they were transporting our library staff. To have those exchanges interface with kids in their communities and in their neighborhoods. Our custodial team continuing to clean and to meet those standards, which seemed like they were changing all the time, whether it was coming from OHA. Or ODE, or the CDC for that matter. And Steve's team and working with the childcare grants and making sure that those funds were dispersed out to the community as quickly as possible. This has been an amazing team. I'm very, 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 very proud of the work that they've done. So thank you again.
All right. Up next, we have our strategic plan reports. And it looks like Carl's going to be leading us off here. Carl, do we want to do this? I'm sorry, wait a second. Yes, we have our strategic plan reports for human resources. My apologies, I'm reading the wrong part of the board packet. So that's Susan. Who'll be leading off and talking to us about human resources, and then Shelley. On communications and then Steve on technology. And if everybody kind of does what we just did, hold your questions till the very end, and then we'll ask them of all three of them. Once they finish their reports. So Susan, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Colette, and members of the board and Superintendent Grodding. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about this report for human resources. Before we get the report on the shared screen, I would like to very quickly acknowledge some of our team members. Who are available here with me today, and I just want to acknowledge them because we are a team effort. So I have. Personnel specialists, well, actually, I think Carissa Mars. Carissa, if you would briefly say one word so that your square comes up.
Hi, everyone.
And Stephanie Herb, our higher ed liaison.
Hello.
Thank you so much for being with me today here. Powerhouse team in HR, so I'm privileged to be able to speak to some of the work that we do together. So you can advance to our next slide, David, and. Our, our strategic plan uses some particular metrics for our quality staff goals, and that includes. The metrics of our evaluation for licensed staff. And the percentages of distinguished proficient or basic, along with staff retention data and staff survey data. You have our written report, as Carl mentioned before the ops reports, and so you can. Rest assured that I'm not going to recreate all of that data or that report for you in verbal form here. I'm just going to move kind of quickly through. And highlight some elements and then allow for questions at the end. So we can go to our next. Slide, please. So. In order to. Attract and maintain, to recruit and to retain. A high-quality diverse staff. It is important that we work collaboratively across our state with our state. Professional organizations and with other districts and higher education and our partners in different sectors. It's also important that here as a district, that our efforts are diversified in the sense of working with other departments. HR has a leadership role. We have a huge impact on our. School district's ability to. Increase candidate pools with diverse staff and to provide options for hiring managers for. Staffing, but also we work together with other departments and with our schools to make, help make Beaverton a place where. All of our staff want to stay. So some of our key partners are our higher education partners. Some of our key efforts include bilingual recruitment and retention, which we focused on for about four or five years. We do local job share, job fairs, regional. Sometimes we go out of state, we haven't done that this year. We also understand that there's a great deal of support for the impact on retention of mentoring new teachers, and in recent years, we've even ment. Mentor teachers that may not be new, they may be veteran, but they may be in new positions. So. What we're trying to do is balance our efforts to go out and recruit people to come be a part of our team, but at the same time also. Make Beaverton a destination and a place where people want to stay. So we'll keep going here, David. And so how do we set that strategy? Well. I've been in HR here in Beaverton for nine years, and before that I was in schools in situations where we were serving diverse students. In programs that were very powerful programs, and so this has been something I'm interested in for a number of years, and. I'm happy to say that there has been a lot of. Progress in terms of across the state. Entities working together to increase the pipeline of diverse staff and high-quality staff. And a lot of awareness within our school district. Of how to make Beaverton a place where all students and all staff feel like they belong and have dignity and respect. And so I'm thankful that we have seen some. Progress, we have seen some achievement, we have a lot more to go, but a key piece for us right now is really to. Focus our efforts on a needs assessment. There's a lot we could do, there's a lot we are doing. And the question is, where is the most hopeful strand for us to put our energy to make? To move us to the next level. So needs assessment is very important, and you'll see on this slide, which I won't read to you, that we also want to make sure that we're. Looking at a number of different ways to continue to bring. Quality educators into the Beaverton School District and make Beaverton a place where quality educators wish to stay. So continuing, David, to our next slide in the series. Part of what is important for us to acknowledge right now is that we are. Facing in this moment, some particular challenges. Due to the context of the pandemic that we've heard about from other reports. We really are seeing that there's an impact on our staff. There's employment volatility outside and inside the education sector that impacts our own staff. We have heard trends of some of our staff that are moving out of state. Sometimes we have long-running veteran teachers that are leaving us for other. Opportunities because of that volatility that is a part of the societal changes that are impacted by the pandemic. As has already been mentioned, we have tremendous challenges with our labor market in all sectors. One thing I just want to speak to, to kind of give an idea of some of the challenges we're dealing with is. Across the state of Oregon. The number of active sub licenses from December twenty nineteen to December twenty twenty. Went down from a hundred percent down to fifty-seven. Percent, I think that's what I said, yeah, sixty-six percent in December of twenty twenty, and at the current time, the. September, it's at fifty-seven percent. So fifty-seven percent of the labor force for licensed substitutes in Oregon that we had in December of twenty nineteen. In Beaverton, we currently have seventy-six percent of our normal subpool. And that is a significant loss for us, but as you can see, it's a higher. Percentage than we're seeing across the state. And one thing I will say is Beaverton continues to. Be a school district where people do want to work and where people want to stay. But because of the overarching labor market and the challenges that we're seeing, we are definitely experiencing incredible challenge with that. We have had sub shortages every day this year, every day. So every day this year, we have had. Either other licensed staff or principals in classrooms. And we also have an unusual challenge with diverse and bilingual candidates in that other districts are very competitive as well. And so. It is. It is a market that's, that is highly competitive, and we're finding that that impacts. Attracting diverse bilingual candidates. We also, just like all of our employees, stamina is a problem in the pandemic. And losing employees due to just fatigue and exhaustion and the conditions that they're working in. Some cases, there are concerns about safety. I have on here impacted continual negotiations. We have had continual negotiations with our union because our working conditions. Have continually changed in the pandemic. So it is ongoing all the time, and that has a destabilizing effect on the whole system as well. We can go on to our next slide, please, David. And then HR's specific role in addressing these challenges is a beautiful combination of. Both technical and adaptive. We want to take advantage of the opportunities in every challenge to make adaptive changes that we need to make. To make changes having to do with the culture of our district that are positive and. Transformational, and we want to be strategic in everything we do, but at the same time, the pressures that are. That we're working under in HR, just as we are under all our departments, are requiring tremendously. Increased volume of deliverables, and so our technical expertise. Is taxed like it never has been before, and our structures and our communication, those things have to be tight and disciplined right now because our. Our organization is relying on us for. Transactional and detail-oriented deliverables that are related to the pandemic in addition to our normal work. So. It's a really intense time to work in HR. I will say that an added thing I want to mention is the department itself is in a transformation. Last year, we had five of our ten managers who were new in their positions. And this year, six of our seven front desk folks are in new positions. So. You will see that even on a microcosm level in HR, we are in flux, in change, and we are delivering. For this organization at a time of tremendous challenge and change for all of us. So. We go to the next slide, our key areas are, we've had a very high-volume hiring season, and we're working to onboard our new staff in all categories of the organization. We continue to have all hands on deck to work on a tight labor market. We have negotiations that are ongoing, and again, as I mentioned, our own department. Has its own transition and onboarding that. Presents a challenge as well. One of the things I love about working in HR is we are working with the most valuable professional capital for the organization, which is its people. So if we go to the last slide. Really, there's nothing more important than investing in our people. This is what is going to always make the difference for our organization and help us to stand out. And to get our mission-critical work done for students and for our community. So. I am going to leave you with that and pass the mic over to Shelley Bailey Shaw to move us forward with. Community, communication and community involvement. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. So CCI is made up of myself and seven other staff members. We think of ourselves as a small but mighty. As the name implies, we are in charge of handling all the district-wide communications, along with engaging with our community and our community partners. During the past year, both those roles were of paramount importance. I'd like to take a few minutes to expand on some of the accomplishments that you see highlighted in your report. I want to start with video. As indicated, the department produced one hundred and twelve videos during the past year. I think you'll find that that is the most robust video production of any district in the state. That's thanks to Colin Elliott, Carrie Young, and Sean Van, who work on our videos. The purpose of our videos are really twofold. One, to inform, and we really leaned on those videos to inform our community as we transitioned. To remote learning and then later to hybrid. But also we use video as a vehicle to celebrate our staff and our students. If you haven't already, I'd encourage you to click on the link I provided in your report, which gives you examples of our work. Secondly, we're particularly. Secondly, we're particularly proud of our fentanyl awareness campaign last year called Fake and Fatal. I know that you all are familiar with the campaign, but what you may not know is that the campaign itself has received national attention and we continue to promote and share the resources that we developed for that campaign with other school districts and other public health departments, both around the state and the country. I just had two requests come in today. So we also will be reviving that campaign later this month as we continue to remind our students and our parents about the dangers of fake pills. One area that we don't talk about nearly enough is our community partnerships. And I've provided you with a link to a supplement, supplement report that goes into depth about the dozens and dozens of partnerships that our coordinator Christine Mackin, Christina Mackin has managed over the past year. I'd encourage you to take a deep dive there. You'll see that our community generously donated over a quarter of a million dollars in goods and services. And that's just our district run efforts that's separate from our school run programs, which probably account for another quarter million. Separate from that, Christina managed the distribution of over 63,000 food boxes last year and facilitated numerous food markets around the district. As you know, it's critical for us to supplement the nutritional needs of our students and families. We also served a record number of families through our district sponsored and volunteer run Close for Kids program, formerly known as Close Closet. COVID forced us to entirely rethink that program and we moved to an appointment based model. Despite that shift, Close for Kids served 41% more families last year than in previous years. So kudos to our volunteer services coordinator Joanna Shroud and her team of volunteers. As I start to look at challenges in the coming year, I do think about volunteerism. There's a link in your report where you can see the level of volunteers at each school during the past year. Of course, that was impacted by COVID. And while that's a necessary safety measure, we still want to make sure that our volunteers are engaged and feel a part of our school communities. In particular, Avid is a place where we've seen a drop in volunteers. And in fact, the drop is even a little larger than I indicated in the report. We have some new numbers on that. Second area of challenge is staff morale. You heard during the last board meeting that the staff is feeling quote unquote, April tired in October. We in CCI feel that it's part of our responsibility to communicate the district's support to our staff. And we're continually looking for ways to highlight excellence, show appreciation and build morale. One way in which we're doing that right now is through our Let Speak campaign and the associated videos and social media posts of appreciation. We also believe it's important to continue to foster community support and goodwill. Admittedly, during the past year, there's been some frustration and misinformation in the community. Much of it was spread on social media. We've taken steps in the last few months to better monitor that. And we've done our best to find that, that right balance between, you know, having our community voice their concerns, but doing it in a constructive and way that it's not detrimental to our students and staff. So we'll continue to navigate that as we move through the year. And finally, our big areas of focus for the department in the coming year will be community engagement around our upcoming superintendent search and the bond campaign, along with continued communication support for all things COVID. So happy to answer any questions at the end. Thank you. And I think Steve Langford is next.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the time to briefly share some information on how technology continues to support the learning and the business functions of the Beaverton School District. You have the report in the board packet. I'd like to briefly share some context and some highlights from the work of our teams. The first is a bit of context. When our community passed the 2014 bond, it allowed us to begin a digital transformation of the way we use technology in how students learn, how teachers deliver instruction and how staff in the district accomplish their work. During that time, technology quickly became mission critical to student learning and staff work in our school district. An example of that is with the student devices. Our students have had devices for many years. And thanks to that foresight and preparation from the bond, we were able to enter the pandemic, unlike many school systems around the country. And so we quickly moved to get devices in the hand of students, but that was part of our digital transformation. In March of 2020, when school buildings closed, access to technology systems became even more important. And learning and work moved from physical school buildings to homes across our city, sometimes other states, and in some instances, even other countries. We needed to ensure students could learn anytime and anywhere. And that same concept also applied to how we approached our work. This year, with the largest summer program ever and the transition back to in-person learning, our technology staff were needed once again to make sure that as the school year began, the focus remained on student learning and our technology system supported that most important work. So I'd like to share just a couple of highlights from our recent work. The first is related to cybersecurity, protection of our systems and our data. In reaction to recent cybersecurity attacks, recommendations of best practices and requirements to maintain cybersecurity insurance, we've had to make a number of changes over the summer and more are coming throughout this year. Most of them are thankfully invisible or nearly invisible to our staff and students. But we are working through some challenges with regard to best securing systems and also making sure we're supporting teachers and students who need these systems to teach and learn. Our staff is committed to that balance of implementing requirements and best practices, but also minimizing and mitigating the effects upon our users. Couple of examples of some changes that we're making are the removal of administrative rights on BSD computers. This is a huge security threat because through a fish or through the ability to install malware on a computer, people could take over that computer and use that computer inside of our network to go horizontally and look for other systems to exploit. Another one is multi-factor authentication. So securing the login, so the first time someone logs in from maybe a different place or on a new device, it'll be just like when you interact with your healthcare or your bank, they'll ask for just a code to be sent to you to make sure it's you. And so both of those things put together greatly improve our, our systems and our cybersecurity posture. Finally, I want to take this time to thank our staff and IT. So we have staff assigned centrally and we have staff out in school buildings. And together, they have done exceptional work over this past year and into the start of this school year. Despite a workload of help desk tickets that were over 300% of normal from years ago, they quickly took care of issues while communicating effectively and presenting a calm and reassuring presence to our staff and students. As, as mentioned in the report, despite the stress of the pandemic and the mountain of support needed, the customer surveys offered at the close of every IT ticket show over 95% rating of our staff as excellent or good in the services they provide. We've got a great team of dedicated professionals that I want to thank them for their excellent work. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Board members, any questions? Okay, Karen and then Becky.
You can go first, Becky. I'll go after you.
Okay, thanks. First of all, just like with the last group, you guys, you, you, you've had, your plates were totally full and we just added so much to that. Everywhere we turned, you folks had to adapt and, and react. And Susan, to the HR department, I know you never even got to take a breath of, I mean, all summer long, hiring over 500 employees, still trying to get employees, all the different negotiations. I am just totally amazed by the hours that your whole team puts in over and over again. And again, the, the staffing that we need to keep our school safe. I, there are days after visiting the schools this last week, I'm not as worried about COVID as I am about staffing our schools safely and keeping up with, with all of the needs. So thank you so much for the dedication and then making sure that we're staying focused on trying to get, getting our staff to reflect our better, our student population. So, so thank you for that. And Shelley, thank you for the, the amazing things that have happened in a year of us reacting to how the best ways to reach out to our families and keeping them informed and keep them up to date with all the quick, the quick changes. So I love the videos. I look forward to how creative and the wonderful things. And also Shelley gets to hear from me quite a bit because I'm a very avid TV news watcher. And I have to think that we have more stories on the news and that is because your department is so approachable. I've got to think that the news folks like working with your department because I cannot think it's, it's not always for bad things. Just even last week on the awareness on mental health. I just so appreciate the professionalism that your whole team brings to this. And then finally, Steve, I'm being able to watch you because I'm on my new Mac computer that is keeping me safe. And, and thank you for providing the board members with all of that. But again, your department working around the clock, no summer break and just reacting again to how we best educate our kids during, whether it be CDL or hybrid, providing the tools to our staff. And just thank you. Thank you so much. Again, it's the same question that I had for the last group and that is, you know, seeing the results of how much of this, how much are we going to need to, to spend to keep, to keep things going? What, what are we going to need for the Close for Kids? What, what are we going to need to keep these part, community partnerships going? Steve, what are we going to need in, in IT to go for the next generation and cybersecurity? And then absolutely, Susan, what do you need from this board to back you up on our most important asset? And that is our staff. What is it that we, do we have the right level entry to hire people? What, what is it that you need from this board so that we can keep providing our most important asset? And that is, that is our staff.
I want to, I'm jumping in because you asked all three of us and so I just thought I'd jump in first. I just want to say that this board is incredibly supportive of the work that we're doing. And the involvement of board members in negotiations, the involvement of board members working with us on subcommittees to do the work that we're doing, the engagement that you have in meetings, all of that speaks volumes and gives us inspiration and strength. The other thing I want to say is thank you, Becky, for acknowledging the incredible work that HR, the department has done over many months of this, of this pandemic. And it is, it is longer than a marathon. I will say this, that it is a tremendous amount of work, but I know we are not working harder than our teachers in the classrooms and then our custodians in the schools and our nutrition service workers. And everyone in this organization is digging deep and working like they've never worked before to face challenges that we have never faced before. And as I mentioned today in a message I sent out to leaders, it's meaningful because it is so difficult. And so thank you for acknowledging that. At times, our energy does fail us and we sometimes lose sight of our inspiration, but it is a tremendous group and the work is, could, from our perspective, could not be more important. I failed to follow up on what Dawn said earlier. We are working with our labor partners on hiring and retention bonuses for classified staff and also looking at the pay for substitutes on the license side. And I want to just say that when I mentioned that, you know, there's an impact of us being in constant negotiations, I don't mean that to be that it's anyone's fault. I think it's a tremendous burden on the labor associations as well as our management. And it is just one, an additional result of being in the condition that we're in with all the rules constantly changing and working conditions changing. But anyway, thank you. I will stop there. If you have more, more questions, feel free to ask. But thank you so much for your engagement and for being a supportive board.
So Susan, I do worry about the burnout and I really worry about the mental health of, of our staff. So if there's something this board can do to support either one of those, I, I know we can't just have a magic wand and have lots of, but I do really worry about how we're going to best serve that. So, so please let the board know how we can support that.
Thank you, and I share that deep concern and, and the wanting to make sure that we do everything in our power to address that for all of our, all of our staff.
Karen?
Again, Becky, I just want to thank all of our presenters and all of our staff that is out there doing this work. They're the ones on the ground and really appreciate them. I'm excited, Susan, that you mentioned the needs assessment that will be happening so we can have the voice of our staff and as we look at next steps in supporting the retention of our, of our staff and recruiting and how we can improve. I'm curious and hopeful that we'll get, and I think you've started working on House Bill 2021 this year so that we are prepared with the work that occurs there. With communications, I'm, you know, the videos have been amazing. I actually like, Becky, I like, I look forward to seeing and learning from our own community, all the richness and wealth that is out there. And I really appreciate it as a parent. I've appreciated Parent Square. I'm easily able to communicate with all of the teachers and just ask questions. And they've been very graceful in getting back to me. School counselors, it's like, I'm able to do it at my own time and they can answer when they're available. Really, really helpful. I also wonder how do we continue, I saw in the report that we're continuing to work with our multilingual department to provide access for our diverse student populations. And if a parent, I, I think Shelley, you mentioned that there is a way that we can tell who hasn't logged on yet to Parent Square. And so I just hope, how do we, I know we were all short people and all this, but if a parent isn't able, or we can tell that they haven't yet logged on to Parent Square, they're missing out on a lot of information because that's how we're communicating most things. And there are some emails that come as well. But I'm highly concerned for those that haven't yet connected. So I, as we continue to work on Parent Square and the amazing pieces of communication that can go back and forth, I look forward to seeing how we get to all of our families in that way. Thank you.
And Karen, just so you know, we ran a report today and we have contact, correct contact information for 99.1% of our district, which is near perfect as far as having information. Now it's the next step. It's the, we, we know that we have the correct information for them. Now we have to make sure that they're engaging with us. And so, you know, we really are leaning on our school based staff who are in most direct contact and have the relationships with those parents to look at their analytics, to see who's not reading emails and then to reaching out and see what kind of support that we can offer them, whether it's a one-on-one training or, or whatnot. But that continues to be a focus for us.
Becky, if I could, if I can just interject, once you asked what the board could do. And I'll go back to the, the last board and the devices that we were able to purchase through the bond. What I can tell you is there were other school districts who did not have that foresight and their students were really left with nothing and districts had to just really pivot to try to get the devices. And we know what the supply chain is. But through Steve's work and the foresight, you know, the, the foresight of the last board, to be able to say, hey, we want to make sure every student is going to have access to the technology. And, you know, back then you could never have predicted a pandemic, but probably this may not be the last pandemic that kids have to go through or the last crisis that somebody has to go through. But the board having the foresight to be able to say, hey, we want to, we want to be able to have a communication tool that we know that all students have access to. So I think as we get ready to go to a new bond is, are what are those things that we should be predicting out there? And especially for some of our most vulnerable and marginalized students. all the way from access, devices, hotspots. What are some of those things that we know that all of our students are going to need?
Exactly. Took the words right out of my mouth, Dawn. Well done. The bond allowed us to do two full device deployments to students. And, and having that ability to project out greatly helped us. And the, the timing was such that as we were moving into the second round of device deployments, we actually had the first round of devices still left. And there, there was some life out of them that we squeezed an extra a year to get out of them. So as Superintendent Rodding mentioned, we entered this in a very different situation. And it is all due to the work that went into passing the bond and our community's generous support.
And Becky, I didn't get a chance to answer your question as far as what our department needs from the board. And I would just say that our building leaders are spread thin right now. We recognize that. But we do need to have a continued emphasis on nurturing our community partnerships. There's some work involved there and I know that, you know, time is short. But if anything that the pandemic did prove to us in the last year is those community partnerships were crucial to getting our kids what they needed. And those schools who invested in those, those partnerships prior to the pandemic really benefited from that during the pandemic. So as you visit schools and as we have our upcoming community partnership team meeting, I just think an extra emphasis on that would be appreciated.
Ogana?
So I just want to echo Becky and Karen, say thank you for all the hard work that you all have put in to move the district forward, from the human resources to IT and communications. They are really appreciated. So thank you. I only have a comment for, for Shelley and Communication. I've seen most of the videos, not all, I apologize, but they are amazing. I was just wondering if there's a video or if there's a plan to include in All Things COVID, to include maybe a video that can inform on vaccination, what to expect in quarantine and how to access mental health support if you're in quarantine. So something along those lines when making videos on the All Things COVID. It might already be out there or maybe not, I'm just, you know, just something to think about next time a video is made.
Yeah, as far as the, the mental health support, we just finished a campaign last week with our behavioral wellness teams that emphasized mental health awareness and had a Q and A session with our community, which is available for everyone. So we've been trying to push that message. As far as some of the other COVID protocols, I got to be honest, it's super tricky because I'm not exaggerating when I say that I update the FAQs online on a daily basis, sometimes on an hourly basis. So it's difficult to invest the resources in making a video when that information continues to, to change so often. But certainly when we get an opportunity and we feel like something is like in place, we do try to get that information out via video. And I should mention that we've made an effort with our COVID videos especially to make sure that they're produced in Spanish as well. And that, you know, we make sure we use the closed captioning on our YouTube channels so that they get translated into all the languages. So, you know, that's something that we continue to emphasize in our department as far as access to all.
Susan?
Actually, this made me think about something in terms of, you know, having translations when we're having a meeting like this. Is it possible to have that available via Zoom? So like if there's a language barrier, they can see it in their language down below. I know you can do that for hearing impaired. I just don't know if that's something that can be offered for our multi-language district?
We've sort of dabbled in that when we had our fake and fatal conversation. What it requires is setting up, it's a very complicated technical thing, but setting up sort of a separate breakout situation where you're doing interpretation live. So you would have to have Spanish interpretation live. You'd have to have another breakout room for Somali interpretation live. So it's certainly something we can look into. The key is having people, one, know about it and two, kind of sign up in advance because you, you have to make sure that we have the personnel to, to cover that. But we can look into it. It's, it's difficult with really long meetings to provide that sort of interpretation. But perhaps during our regular business meetings as opposed to the work sessions, that might be something we can incorporate.
Other questions from the board?
Oh, I just want to echo everybody's thanks. This has been an incredible year and you guys have done amazing work. Susan, thank you for, for helping us so much with staffing and supporting our staff. This is a really difficult time for all of our staff members. We know how hard they're working and we appreciate the work you're doing to support them and also to help bring new people in the door as we're, we're facing some difficult conditions there. And Shelley, as our community has, you know, so much need right now, the work that you guys are doing to make sure that, you know, there's engagement with our community and that we're getting resources like food and clothes to our students. That's incredible. I think people don't always know that the communications department does that function, but it's such an incredibly important function and we really appreciate that. And Steve, I do not know where we would be at as a district if we did not have those devices. And then your support and your staff support when you pivoted to be able to keep those devices in use, right? Because getting them out to our families is one thing, but keeping them going and being able to provide a support line and everything else for families, that's incredible. My one question is for you. I know right now that we're reaching lots of families and that our hotspot program has really been helpful in providing internet access. But what would it take to reach all of our families and make sure that we have internet access for every kid in our district? What are our barriers? And, and what would we need to be doing as a district if we were to overcome those barriers?
That's a good question. Yeah, our hotspot program right now, our fleet is about 50% of what we used last year. That's due to monies that were, as Becky mentioned, monies that came in and were utilized and did not come in again. And so we do have hotspots right now for students as they enter quarantine. We have a process in place to where if they do not have internet, we can get them internet access. And then when they come out of quarantine, we repurpose the hotspot so that we can prepare it for the next student who needs it. And right now we're, we're holding steady on that. Elementary students are not taking devices home, so the need is different than last year. And we are focusing connectivity at the secondary level because those devices do go home. We want to make sure that learning happens or is able to happen in the evening hours and on weekends for our secondary students. So it's very much like it, we looked in 2019 before the pandemic. One thing we're looking at is the possibility of maybe creating a private LTE network. So kind of the network that your cell phone runs on, a network that would be for students that would leverage our infrastructure. And so that's something a number of school districts are looking into. For us, what that would look like is that we would be looking at schools with neighborhoods that have more students without internet connectivity and prioritizing those places. So we are in the beginning stages. We've had a few meetings with some people who work in that space to see what it would take in terms of the initial investment and then ongoing monies to support that work. We also have been in conversations with the Beaverton City leadership around providing internet access and ways that we could work together with perhaps other public agencies.
Is that a potential like bond request or something coming? Or is that more of a long-term thing, like a three, four, or five years out?
I think it could be something depending on what we get back for the initial setup for the, for example, for that LTE network. If we're able to move forward on that, if it looks viable, then that would be something that the capital investment could move into potentially a bond. What we, what we need to do right now is determine the scope and then, and take a look at the, what the cost structure looks like.
Keep us in the loop because that's one of the, where as a board, we can be collaborating with city government. And if that's something where, you know, we need to work together to cover our community, let us know. We can be your advocates.
Very good. Thank you.
Susan, you got a question?
Yeah, it kind of ties along with the city of Beaverton versus the county. So is, is something like that, you know, possible with the county, Washington County too? Because half of our population is in unincorporated Washington County. And so I want to make sure that if we, we can do that for people inside. I think we only have two high schools that are actually inside the boundaries, that we can do that for our students that are outside of the Beaverton, city of Beaverton.
Yes, and thank you because I, I did omit that. Right before the pandemic hit, we were in conversations with Washington County and also the city of Hillsborough to talk about what that could look like at a county level, for example. So the great benefit of that is if we were able to work together with the county, then it's not just Beaverton that benefits, but we can actually, that partnership would, would be much more far-reaching. And, and, and then so this is, these are great examples of ideas that pre-pandemic, we were just starting to move on. And now what we've got to do is be able to pick them back up, dust them off and then, and see where we can go.
Any other questions, board members?
All right. Well, we are a little bit early for dinner, which is never a bad thing. So if we were at 5:25 now, if folks want to come back at 5:55, so we get a half an hour for dinner and then we will come back and do the second half of our board meeting. five fifty-five, so we get a half an hour for dinner, and then we will come back and do the second half of our board meeting. And I think we can just leave our screens blacked out and sound off and then just come back to the meeting.
Oh, you're on mute. So good. We're just like two minutes early.
I know. Okay, I mean, we can say this.
Becky, you're so good. Oh, you're on mute.
So good. We're just like two minutes early.
I know. Okay, I mean, we can say this. I mean, my vibe is it's gonna end on time, I hope. It's been a while. It's like, wow. Who said that?
Just a reminder, you're all being live broadcast, by the way.
Oh, still, that's okay to say. Thanks for the reminder, David. Thought you were at a baseball game. Okay.
Tom, Pat's running home, but he should be, he should be there pretty close to when we start. He wanted to know if he could go home, so I told him, run home, and he'll be on as soon as he gets home.
Pat McCrory?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And you're talking about or just in general?
Yeah, just in general, as a cabinet.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Gotcha. That's great. Thanks for the heads up. I think we got Mike on deck next here. And is Carol with us?
I'm gonna check on her. I just checked with her. She should be on her way in here.
Okay, I know we're a couple of minutes early. If we start with you, Mike, can you kind of introduce it and then lead Carol in? Or do you want me to wait until she's here to start?
Let's give her just a minute, Tom, if that's okay.
Sure. And I can, you know, I can kind of do an intro for board members because this is a big piece we're doing here. Um, let's see, I think we're just waiting on a couple of folks, then we can get it started. I hope everybody had a good dinner. I enjoyed my Cliff Bar. It was delicious.
Tom, we're gonna be done early. I mean, not that I'm rushing anything, just clarifying that for anybody, but this is an early meeting.
So far, we're on time. Yeah, hopefully. We'll see. I mean,
We've got Carol now, Tom.
Oh, okay. Awesome. That's great. I think I'm just waiting on Corinne. And I feel like there's somebody. No, I think that's it.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Carol. Thanks for joining.
Hi, Carol.
Hi, Becky. Hi, Tom.
We've got our sage of the market and purrs. Right, I'm just gonna give it one more minute.
Carol, I told Mike for light reading over the weekend, I went back to the manual that you prepared with more and just a little skinny 150-page manual. Everything you want to know about bonds, but were afraid to ask.
Well, we're all working on our finance degrees to understand what you have in there. So, board members are next. Part of the meeting is about future bond funding. This is really important because we're going to be making a decision here in the next couple of months about whether to refer a bond for election and whether to do that in May of next year, or whether to do it in November of next year. And a lot of that depends upon the information we are about to receive on how far that money can go for us and the strategies and ways that we can be prepared to use that. So we've got Associate Superintendent Schofield here and Carol Samuels, who's worked with our district for a long time to help us understand how bond financing works and some of the other intricate financial pieces that take to run a district. And I will let you guys take it from here.
Okay, thanks Chair Colette, Members of the Board, Superintendent Grodding. As you heard earlier this evening, we're winding down the 2014 bond campaign. I think earlier this summer, you saw some information about the long-range facility plan and needs around the district. And so we thought this was a good opportunity to share with you a little bit about the basics of bond funding and financing, as well as a little peek at where Beaverton kind of stands today. And we are lucky enough to have Carol Samuels with us. I have worked with Carol Samuels for a very long time. We've done a number of bond issues together. Somehow I got old and she stayed young, so that's kind of weird. She is also, as you mentioned, Tom, an armchair PERS expert. So if you ever want to talk about PERS with Carol, she's willing to chat about that as well. So Carol, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you. If you'd like to do a little more introduction, you're welcome to, but we'll take it away.
I think we should spend the time talking about things that matter to you guys. Thank you for loading the presentation. Do I have control of it, or shall I just say, go to next slide?
Let me know, next slide. I've got you.
Hey, thank you, David. So, as Mike said, I have worked with the district for quite a few years. In fact, when I look at the list of outstanding debt that you folks have incurred, it's a little scary how I can point to every single one of those and see my fingerprints on it. So if you have questions about what happened in 1989, I probably have an answer. But rather than starting at where you are today, let's go back to some basics. And David, if you could go to slide two. I always like to start with the assumption that you know nothing. And while I see a lot of familiar faces, I also see some new ones. So I'd like to start with definitions. Hopefully, I'm not insulting anyone. And if this is really basic, we can go through it quickly. But what is a general obligation bond? Well, first, let's start with what is a bond? A bond is just a fancy name for a loan. It's a borrowing that is usually too large to go to your local bank to get the funding for. So it tends to be broken into pieces. And perhaps it's sold to impart a bank over here, maybe a mutual fund over there, maybe an insurance company, maybe your neighbor who is looking to diversify their own personal portfolio and reduce the risk of, say, the stock market, which tends to be more volatile. And you may see my dog who wants to lie on my computer right now. Anyway, um, general obligation bonds are just a specific type of bond. They vary from state to state, but in Oregon, general obligation bonds are secured by property taxes in addition to the property taxes that are levied by the district for operating purposes. And in addition to your local option property tax, which is an extra property tax that belongs simply to Beaverton School District. As such, because Oregonians tend to pay their property tax bills because the consequence of not paying your property tax bill is actually pretty severe. They can come and take your house. Because of the likelihood of repayment, it's considered the highest quality credit that a school district or other municipality can offer to investors, to lenders. So therefore, it gets the lowest interest rate of any type of borrowing that a municipality can undertake. And it's also true that the interest rate is held down because in most cases, as long as you spend the money on public projects, the interest that you pay to an investor is exempt both from federal income tax and in Oregon, from Oregon income tax. As a consequence, the interest rate is reduced over what would be the case if the investor had to pay taxes on that interest. So that's a backdoor way that the federal government and the state actually subsidize capital projects for municipalities. Next slide. In Oregon, general obligation bonds, it's important to note, are not subject to Measure Five or Measure Fifty, which means that all of the discussions you may have had in the past related to compression on, say, your local option levy, which is a real impact, reduces the amount of the levy on the local option side, does not apply in the general obligation space at all. It is, in fact, a much easier tax to understand. It is paid at the same rate by every property owner within the district. And it is an additional tax that is paid uniformly by taxpayers. Because it's an additional tax, however, you have to get the voters to say yes. And there are theoretically four different dates at which you can ask for that voter support. March, May, September, and November. But as Tom noted, we're focusing on May or November because in recent years, those two election dates were exempt from the old double majority rules. Which, if you don't know what I'm talking about, the good news is you don't have to know what I'm talking about. As long as you stay with either a May or a November election, your voter test is what we call a simple majority test, meaning that you have to get 50% of those who show up plus one to vote yes, and you have a valid election. So even though theoretically you could go in March or September, I haven't seen a school district approach those elections in nearly a decade. Theoretically, there is a limit on how much you can ask the voters for under Oregon law, but frankly, that limit, just under 8%, 7.95% of the district's real market value, is so massive that I don't know a single school district that has come close to asking for it because it would cause your levy to just balloon. So for example, for you guys, your debt limit is theoretically 4.4 billion. That's with a B dollars. So, good luck. Love to help you with it. Kind of think your voters might have something negative to say about you going all the way to your limit. Other rules and regulations that are relevant are the definition of how you can use bond proceeds. And once again, Oregon is actually pretty liberal on this front. What the statute says is that you can use proceeds for capital construction and improvements, which is defined essentially as any tangible item with a useful life of one year or more. So certainly, that means you can finance buildings, obviously. You can finance major renovations to buildings, obviously. You can finance school buses because they usually have a useful life of one year or more. You can even finance curriculum and computers on desks because those have a useful life of one year or more. The only limitation is that you cannot finance things for longer on average than the useful life of what you're financing. So if all you were financing were laptops, then you probably shouldn't have a term that's longer than a year. But since it's an average, and usually school districts throw in a basket of buildings over here, roof replacements over there, maybe a couple of school buses and computers or technology that have a shorter life, since the weighted average includes more expensive assets, that, you know, my kids went to Portland Public in buildings that last 100 years. It is not at all unusual to see a 20- or 30-year financing, and that is perfectly acceptable. When you go to the ballot, you have to put together a ballot title that is actually pretty formulaic. And the bond attorney will help you draft it, make sure you've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. But in the scheme of things, it has to include three key things. The first is a not-to-exceed amount. You can always borrow less. You can't borrow more. The second thing is a not-to-exceed term, or in my world, a maturity. So you can always borrow for a shorter period. You can't borrow for a longer period. So if you want to have maximum flexibility, aiming high on the amount and aiming long on the term gives you the ability to tailor once you actually get to the bond sale. Obviously, within the purview of what you think the voters will support. And then the final ingredient in a ballot title is the one that takes the most time and thought. And that's a reasonably detailed explanation of how you're gonna use the money. If it's not in the ballot title, regardless of how much money you have, you cannot use the funds for that. The classic example of how you can run afoul of ballot title is I worked with a number of school districts that thought they were going to build a building on a piece of land that they owned. Turned out that the land was not appropriate for environmental reasons, so they wanted to buy a new piece of land. Purchase of land was not in the ballot title, so they could not do that. So when you are getting through the process of writing the ballot title, you want to be both as specific and also as general as possible, taking into account all potential contingencies. Final piece of rule and regulation comes to us from the federal government. Since these are exempt from federal income tax, the federal government does have many rules and regulations to pay attention to. And the key one here is what's called the three-year rule, which is when you borrow, you have to have a reasonable expectation that you can spend 85% of the proceeds within three years. If you don't have that reasonable expectation, if you have architectural drawings, for example, that say, it's gonna be five years until you can spend all of the money, or 85%, then what the bond attorney would tell you is you would have to split the issue into pieces in order to be able to meet that three-year test. Okay, by the way, if people have questions as we go, I hope you will interrupt me because if you have a question, chances are other people do too. So let me pause there and make sure no one So let me pause there and make sure no one has questions that I haven't answered.
Carol, I have a question about your last bullet point. So when you're talking about, um, spending the money, are you talking about the money being assigned, committed, or being out of the account and a cut, a check is cut? Like, what, what, at what level does that have to happen?
So this is why, uh, this is a good conversation to have early, but I think there is a lot of confusion about this eighty-five percent test. It is not an actual expenditure test. If you get to the end of three years and you have not expended eighty-five percent, then it's not like they're gonna come and take the money back or declare that your bonds are now taxable. It puts you into a different, this sounds minor, but it could cause Mike some headaches, a different investment scheme for the proceeds. Where they hold the line on you, though, is that on the date of closing, either Mike or Don or someone else who is authorized is going to be asked to sign a document that says they have an expectation that they will spend eighty-five percent of the proceeds. It has to be a good faith expectation. And so if you've had conversations or you have, you know, construction draw schedules that clearly show that that's not something that's a reasonable expectation to have, then you could be audited by the IRS and theoretically, your bonds could be deemed taxable.
Okay.
Okay.
But if, if you have a reasonable expectation to believe that that money has been committed for that expense, and it's on a schedule to be taken care of at a particular time, you're, you're okay?
Correct. And if it turns out that, you know, as is often the case, particularly when you're talking about remodeling, you run into things that you just don't expect. But was it reasonable back when you closed the bond issue that you could expect that the money would be spent in accordance with your plans? Sure.
Gotcha.
But one of the things, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Uh, one of the reasons I wanted to emphasize this is that in a couple of slides, we've run some pro forma what-if numbers that show a roughly seven hundred million dollar issue split into two sales three years apart. And whether or not that's exactly the right formulation, I think you won't know until you fully identify what projects you want and we get closer to an actual bond sale. But that's fairly standard to break bonds into multiple sales, particularly at some of the amounts you guys have been considering.
And our previous bond was broken in three sales, or was it two?
Um, Mike, help me here, I've sort of.
Yeah, I don't know that. I know it was at least two.
Okay. I know Sunita and then Susan have questions.
Yeah, this is really good information. I now understand why everybody was singing your praises, Carol. Thank you very much. My question is this three-year limitation. Now, this requirement is so that we would have the tax exempt for the people who are investing in the bond, right? That's the reason the IRS will go for an audit. Do they look at how we, you know, like, two thousand fourteen bond, uh, we still have the money in two thousand twenty-one? Maybe there was different sales in between. Do they look at our prior track record in, for the future, or no?
I don't believe so. You know, it's an issue-by-issue test. Uh, this is really the purview of the bond attorneys. I suppose if they came in and did an audit and saw that you had a track record of miscalculating your reasonable expectation, that might steer them one direction or another. But I don't believe you have substantial sums left over from the twenty-fourteen issue, so.
I guess right now it should not be an issue because everything is like, you know, there's supplies issue and timeline to follow that timeline is very, very difficult in this time, right? So I don't think it would be a problem, but I, thanks for the clarification.
Susan?
Um, so, hi Carol, thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate it. Nice seeing you. And I have to say, I appreciate your animals because I have multiple animals. As you saw, a cat go by just now. Um, so my question is kind of like the what-if question and the impact of possibly a government, uh, shutdown if, and how that impacts the bonds, bond market. Like, I assume we wouldn't go for a bond if, you know, we're in default, but as a government, US government.
Uh, so Susan, that is an excellent question that I'd like to defer, uh, when we start talking about the market. Because it, you know, all of the drama in Congress has had an impact on the market, and I think that will be easier to explain when we get to the visuals, so. Okay, well, uh, if we could then move on. Um, I always like to spend some time whenever I'm talking about bonds with school boards, particularly school board members who may be asked to carry the load of the campaign. Um, I like to spend a little bit of time talking about bond math because way too often I hear, you know, campaign representatives and others making statements about bond levies that are not accurate. And not only do I prioritize accuracy, but I also prioritize protecting your staff from angry taxpayers coming back later and saying, "You said it would cost this." Um, when the bottom line, if you take no other message away tonight, the one message I would like you to take away is anytime you talk about the cost of a bond issue, you want to preface it by saying, "This is estimated." Okay? So, what happens with a bond? Well, when you sell a bond, and all school districts in Oregon sell bonds with fixed interest rates, there are no school district bond issues that are sold with variable rates. So on the day you sell the bonds, those rates are locked in, often for twenty or thirty years, which means that on that day, I spit out a schedule that I send to Mike showing exactly what you owe from day one to day thirty years out. So there's no variability in that unless you refinance it later. That amount can be increased by the business office to offset potential delinquencies. Because although Oregonians tend to pay their taxes, not all of them pay them on time. So because we don't want school districts to have to dip into their general fund for general obligation bond debt payments, the Oregon legislature allows you to gross up the amount that is submitted to the county by an amount of anticipated delinquencies. So if someone could hit return, perfect. What Mike and his team submit to the county assessor, because it's the county that's responsible for levying all property taxes, is the amount of debt service due plus a percentage, usually it's about five percent, of anticipated non-payment. The county then divides, next return, please, by the district's assessed value, which is the property value of all properties within the district subject to taxation. Okay? And then he further goes ahead and divides by a thousand to get, next return, the levy rate per thousand dollars. So as I said, we know on the date of closing what the numerator is going to be. In my example, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt plus fifty thousand for delinquencies, five percent roughly, for a million dollars that is submitted to the county. We don't know, however, what the denominator is gonna be. Next slide. Um, so in my example, I'm estimating it's a billion dollars. So when you take a million and you divide by a billion and you further divide by a thousand, you get one dollar per thousand dollars of valuation. What that means in English is that if you have a property with an assessed value of a hundred thousand dollars, one dollar per thousand is a hundred dollars in extra property taxes per year. Okay, so again, the numerator is fixed, but the denominator is calculated every year. And many of you may be familiar with the fact that Measure Fifty allows you to grow your assessed value by three percent per year, et cetera, et cetera. The problem is new, there's three percent, but then there are all the exceptions that are granted in addition or less. So if there's new construction, as there has been in Beaverton, it may grow more than three percent. If real market value, actual market value declines, assessed value may grow less than three percent. So at best, the denominator is an estimate. So let's see what happens if my estimate of a dollar is rendered, uh, wrong by changes in assessed value. Can you hit return, please? Okay, so let's say, wow, things are growing like gangbusters and rather than being a billion plus three percent, it doubles in value. Got the same numerator, you divide by twice the denominator, and guess what happens to the levy rate? Yeah, it goes in half. Okay, I am going to put myself on mute and go make sure my dog is quiet. I'll be right back. Sorry about that. One thing that COVID has caused for everybody is a certain patience with technological difficulties. All right, but what happens, next return, please, if the opposite happens and you have some kind of catastrophic reduction in value? Well, then, it returned, please. Your assessed value going in half causes your levy rate to double. So I am going to show you some projections in a couple of slides of different amounts and how much that might cost your taxpayers. And what's the one word I asked you all to remember when I showed you that?
Estimated. This is an estimated.
Excellent. Exactly. You cannot guarantee anything. We can get pretty close, but please do not say that your taxes will be X, or we see an increase of Y. As long as you say, "We estimate it's going to be X," you'll be good. Okay, next slide. There is a state program that is new to Beaverton. It was initially approved, I want to say, in the twenty fifteen legislature that does provide a certain amount of matching grant money for districts that qualify and get voter approval of a G O. It is meant to be a lever that hopefully pushes districts over the edge, district voters over the edge between saying no and saying yes. The amount of money is not colossal. Uh, the amount that was authorized for this biennium is just under a hundred and forty-five million or roughly thirty-six million per election. And Beaverton is only eligible for eight million, which is the maximum. Most districts are eligible only for four million, but it can make a difference. And I think, Mike, you may want to speak to your experience in Gresham.
Yeah, and, uh, back in two thousand sixteen, Gresham, uh, actually qualified for the eight million dollars, and it was a pretty good selling point for our community to know that essentially there was eight million dollars worth of, uh, resources coming from throughout the state to help, uh, invest in our schools in Gresham. So it was a pretty good selling point in that district.
And, and Carol, wasn't it more for some of your rural districts that just could not get a bond passed without giving that added incentive?
Yeah, Becky, it was definitely prioritized for smaller districts with smaller tax bases who, you know, had, had no success with their voters, and that has helped a lot. However, you know, the legislature recognized that all districts need funds, and so the way they have prioritized uh, more, uh, smaller, more rural, arguably more poverty, uh, stricken districts is they divide the pot in two with sixty percent provided in rank order of those who apply. Um, and Beaverton is currently ranked a hundred and sixty-fifth out of a hundred and ninety-seven districts. So it seems unlikely you're gonna qualify in that zone, but then they take forty percent of the money and they assign it by lottery. So depending on how many districts apply, you may well be in good shape to get notified of a grant even before the election. And that's when you can use it in your election materials. The deadline for the May election, however, is coming right up. You have to file a, uh, long-range facility plan and a needs assessment as of December first, that would be twenty twenty-one, so about six weeks from now. And the application itself is due on December fifteenth, if you want to go on the May election. If you decide you want to wait for November of twenty-two, then the timeline shifts to July first and July fifteenth.
And Carol, we got a question in the chat for you from, uh, Karen.
Okay.
I think my, I had a question about the S D, the S D gold bond, but you kind of just explained it. I wasn't, I got, I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. Then, next slide. All right, so here is a, uh, fairly straightforward schedule of the election dates. Um, if you look at the third line, you can see the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two election date. I want to say this is fairly straightforward. However, since you last went on the ballot, uh, the Secretary of State has complicated your life a little bit in that they now have two filing deadlines. And the first filing deadline is approximately six weeks before the election. No, more than that, two months. Um, so the first filing deadline for May of twenty-two is So the first filing deadline for May of '22 is in February. And at that date, you have to submit a finalized ballot title that is likely going to be identical to the ballot title you would submit on March 17th, but it gives the county time to post it and see if there are any objections. Theoretically, if there are a certain number of objections, you may need to redraft it. But for all intents and purposes, that means all of your decisions need to be made no later than your February board meeting. And if you're being strategic about this, you probably want to make your decisions no later than your January board meeting, so you have time to tweak the ballot language. If you're looking instead at the November of '22 election, that's two lines below that. And although the deadline, the first deadline is in August, given, you know, school holidays and the fact that often boards don't even meet in August, to me, a November election, you really want to have all of your decisions made in June. So, next slide. All right, now we get to talk about my estimated numbers. So, coming back to, I think it was Susan's question about the market. Interest rates right now, this is a snapshot of interest rates from 1996 to today. And, you know, the inescapable conclusion is that interest rates are super low right now, although they have been very volatile. And if you look at the box in the upper right, you can see the volatility of the past year, most of which is attributable to what's going on in Washington DC. So, when it hit a peak in March, we were dealing with the pandemic and not sure if there was going to be a federal stimulus package, and there was a lot of drama about that. Then there was concern that the stimulus package was too large and inflation was going to take off. More recently, you can see some of the uptick related to the debt debate. And directly to Susan's question, if in fact the federal government did default on their debt, there could be havoc in all markets, both bond markets and stock markets, because the expectation is that the US Treasury is the safest borrower across the world. So if that image is shattered, if we really truly fail to raise the debt limit and we go into default, you know, I don't, I don't think Treasury Secretary Janet Yellen was being hyperbolic when she said it could cause a recession. It could. Do I expect that to happen? No, because they come to the brink every single time, and then more calm minds prevail. But it is theoretically a situation that I guess we cannot totally take for granted. So, for that upbeat message, let's go on to the next slide. Okay, lots and lots of little numbers here. The main thing I want to focus on is not the first column. The first column is your real market value. That's the actual market value of all properties within the district, and it has absolutely nothing to do with taxes. Then you have the assessed value, which is the taxable value that was a gift of Measure 50 about 23 years ago, 24 years ago. And you can see that your assessed value is actually substantially below your market value. That is also true on your own personal house. And it is the assessed value that gets taxed. So when I gave my example of $1 on a $100,000 property, I'm sure you all thought, oh my God, multiply that times eight, that's what my property is worth. That's not what you are going to be taxed on. So pull out your homework assignment tonight is to go home and pull out your own property tax bill. And it would not surprise me if your own property has a assessed value that's 60% or less of the market value, which is what the tax burden would be for your neighbors. So it's relevant. One other thing I want to focus on is the final column, which shows you the growth rate. This has not been updated for 2022. And right before we put this together, we did get the 2022 fiscal year information. It shows a growth rate of, I want to say, just under 4%. Is that right, Mike, doing this from memory? Yeah. So, go ahead.
Oh, that's correct. We're in the ballpark, but yeah.
So, your growth has been fairly significantly over Measure 50's minimum of 3% over the course of the past decade. But this past year, it dipped under 4%. So we try to be conservative about our growth assumptions. It is possible we need to be even more conservative, given what happened this past year. Next slide. Okay, so this is a list of how busy we have been together. This is a list of all the bonds that the district has issued since 2011. And there are some that are labeled ADV, REF, UNDS. Those are refinancings of earlier bond issues. You currently have just about 765 million outstanding. Next slide. Because you have a fair number of bond issues, putting together a spreadsheet of all of the ingredients takes a lot of numbers. I just want to focus on the broad picture, which is this is each bond issue you have had since 2011, itemized by year by the amount of debt service due. And on the far right, you can see the total. So in fiscal 2021, which is the blue line, which actually was last fiscal year, you had a total debt service bill of about $67 million. That is projected to rise this year and then stay in this general area, fall a bit, and then rise again, topping out in 2036 at about $80 million. Next slide. Taking that information and translating it into levy rates is what this slide shows. So you have the debt service total and the assessed value. And again, what the county does is just divide. And in the far right columns, above the blue line, third in from the right, you can see the historic levy rate that the district has actually levied. So it went from a low back in 2007 of $1.59 to it looks like the high was $2.18 in 2010. Last year, it was 208, and we projected it would be 210 this year. And I think that's pretty much right on the nose. We then project, if you look at the far right column, that it's going to decline from there as your assessed value continues to grow. And if you look at the next slide, you can see this in graphic form, where 2022 is the high water mark. That's your current year. And then, starting in 2023, it declines a bit and then stays pretty stable, although in 2031, 2030, it's projected to dip a bit there as well. So one of the things to think about in terms of the timing of your bond issue is that if you go on the May 22 ballot, you would be asking for voter approval in the year of that first multicolored bar in 2022. Again, that is fiscal 2022. So May of '22 happens during that first bar, and the first tax would hit the rolls in the year of the dip. Okay, everybody following? All right, I'm seeing some head nods.
Can you, can you go, go over that? So you're saying the dip will happen, so if you went in May, right? So the first year, the $1.50 will come when? The $1.50 one?
Well, we haven't decided how much of a levy we're talking about.
Yeah.
But the first year, for a May 22 election, the first year of the levy would be in fiscal '22, '23, which is the year that the bar drops down.
The assessed values are, you're thinking will go up, so the rate will go down, right? Something like that?
You know, I wish I had the cursor, but if somebody else has control of the cursor, can you put the cursor? Thank you. I think that's Mike. Okay. So move the cursor to the previous bar for a second. Thank you. Okay, so the May 22 election happens in that bar. The first year of the tax for a May 22 election, now please move the cursor to the next bar, would fit in there. On the other hand, if you go with the November 22 election, then that actually occurs in fiscal '23, after the tax rate has already gone down.
Well, you're saying, Carol, is that we can't affect a renewal if we don't go until May, because it'll roll off the books and there'll be a new tax.
It complicates the story.
And, and a lot of times, the strongest method, message with the voters is that you are just renewing a current tax at a similar rate. And so if we let it drop, then it's like it's off the books, and now it's coming back on the books.
I know, Tom, you meant to say you're estimated to renew the tax, right?
There's a big asterisk over everything I say.
So it's a big selling point for the
It can be. It can be. I mean, here's the deal. Districts like yours, that historically have had very strong voter support, may have no issue here, because you could in November of '22 construct a campaign document that says, we project it's going to be X cents more than last year, rather than saying it's going to be X cents more this year. But it does complicate the message. And that was one of the reasons that Don and Mike and Carl wanted to at least entertain the idea of going in May, because that timing makes the message a little simpler. I will note that I have seen districts rush because of a tax levy situation. And sometimes rushing is a way worse mistake than letting a tax decline. So I would say, you know, in my experience, if you don't think you're ready, I wouldn't necessarily let this graph drive your decision-making, but it is a factor that I would suggest you should consider.
One thing I'll add, just to put a little information on top of what Carol's saying here, is when we go and do polling, a renewal message is a message that we poll with our voters to see how strongly that affects their level of support for a bond or a levy. And what I've seen in the past is that can actually have a marked effect. In past years, we've made decisions based on whether that message was a part of what we were doing, and that message is very, very strong.
Why don't we take a look at some actual what-if scenarios, so you can kind of see what we're talking about? If we could go to the next slide. Okay. So this is an analysis assuming a May election, where we are looking at a 25 cent increase. The goal being both to keep the increase minimal and also to generate about $720 million. And you will note, as I previewed before, that there's in the top box, a 2022 sale and a 2025 sale for roughly the same amount of money, 360 million each time, largely because of my sense that you're unlikely to be able to sell the whole thing in one fell swoop because of that three-year reasonable expectations test. Okay, so this assumes a May election, $360 million sold in the first tranche in August, so you can see the dated date. And that's a pretty standard timeline. You get approval in May, you want to sell that summer. And it also assumes two 30-year issues. With that, you can see the first box jumps from in 2022, $2.10, and then it goes to $2.35. And then, that same year, you would sell the 2025 issue, which if you look at the combined column under the 2025 section, keeps it at $2.35 through 2029. Let's go to the next slide, because I think the picture is easier. So, the dark bars are your historic, historic through 2021. The gray bars are our projection of your existing debt. The blue bars are the first issue of this new 720 million theoretical authorization. And the yellow bars are the second issue. And you will note a couple of things. First of all, when you look at the last dark bar in 2022, '21, then there's a gray bar in 2022. Yes, thank you, Mike. There's no drop, because this is a May election where we sell bonds immediately, and the first year of the new tax And the first year of the new tax, which we are assuming is a slight increase of twenty-five cents, occurs immediately, no lag time. If you can envision what would happen if you waited till December, you would basically shift this graph such that the first blue bar would go away. Okay, so you would have a drop and then you would go back up. Is that the death knell for your bond issue? I don't know. But it certainly complicates the message. The other thing you'll note is that we have designed very carefully this bond issue to have steps down. Guess what? Every presidential election. So the first step happens in fiscal twenty-thirty to allow you to go on the ballot in November of twenty-eight, which is fiscal twenty-nine. The next drop down allows you to go on the ballot in November of thirty-six, which is also a presidential election. And so on. So we have specifically designed this to take this election sequence and then accelerate it a little bit. So under this format, you would either go on the ballot in two thousand twenty-two and then be back on the ballot six years from now in order to sequence more carefully with higher turnout presidential elections. Okay, let me pause there and see if there are questions.
So Carol, this is Eric. So if we did that, then um, we might be almost flat-lined forever, right? We'd assume like if we can get those, then we just kind of be level two forty, two fifty-ish range forever. We just replace assets as they get old and decline and, and um, and take care of what we have.
So, what we are building here, Eric, is a structure that could allow you to do that if that was your preference. That has certainly been a successful strategy for other larger school districts like Portland has exactly this format, although they are on a four-year cycle, uh, which personally, I wouldn't object if they went to an eight-year cycle, but that has been their philosophy. Bend also has a very similar structure. Uh, I think Hillsborough and North Clackamas are both building it. And it does give you the opportunity to kind of use a local option philosophy where you need a certain amount for operations on a continuing basis. And guess what? You also need a certain amount to maintain and build new facilities on an ongoing basis. Because you know, a building you need today, thirty years from now is going to be old and it's going to need stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, I am almost done, so why don't we go to the next graph? Uh, so this is a comparison of where your current levy or levy as of twenty-twenty-one stacks up to your neighbors. You are on the upper end, but you're certainly not as high as some with a total of eight dollars and two cents. Uh, a bond rate last year of two oh eight, I think it's two ten this year. Um, that's in contrast to Portland, that's at nine sixty-seven. Uh, and West Lynn, that is at nine sixty-nine, so. Um, is there room for you to add twenty-five cents? Well, uh, it wouldn't put you at the top. If you go to the next slide, you can see where you are just for bond rates. And there you're closer to the middle of the pack. And the next slide, I think, is my contact information, which you are all welcome to use if you have questions, but uh, that is what I had tonight, so. Let me know if there are other questions.
Board members, any questions for Carol?
I assume, Carol, that disclosure was just a fancy way of saying, this is all guesstimate.
Uh, sure. It's also, uh, it's also all the securities ways that theoretically uh, I can take advantage of you, so, yes.
Thank, thank you very much. No matter how many times I hear you present, I always learn something new. So thank you. You are a great teacher.
You are a great audience, so. Um, again, if you do have questions, if something comes up, you know, after this and you're uh, thinking, oh, I wish I could have asked that. Mike and Don and Carl and David, they all know where to find me, so.
I've got a couple of questions, Carol, and they're, they're kind of more for our staff, but they're uh, extensions of the information you shared with us. So my first question is, is when I'm looking at, um, I don't want to use the word renewal. David made an important point that it's not a renewal, but a maintenance of rate. Um, when we're talking about estimated maintenance of rate, that asterisk's still there. Um, and uh, we're, we're looking out over, you know, the long term where you had it projected for the different presidential elections. And we were, let's say we're to maintain that effort, that estimated rate. Um, would that be in sync with what we need to do in order to replace buildings and perform maintenance? Um, is that maintenance effort in alignment with what we know from like our McKinstry studies and some of our other studies we need to do? Or is that below that, what that effort would be above that effort? Does it provide a little bit of a cushion? Where are we at?
Go ahead, Aaron.
Thanks. Um, so I would say just the renewal would be below what we need to take care of the buildings. Um, you know, a good rule of thumb, we've looked at when we add up all the different needs out there is about a hundred million annually. That keeps our maintenance um, ongoing. It's shrinking in our deferred maintenance backlog. It's buying the new school buses, the new computers. It's allowing us to do seismic retrofit, allowing us to build the new facilities. Um, so about a hundred million per year, which translates to about a twenty-five cent tax increase.
Estimated.
Estimated.
And I would also say, Tom, that's difficult as you go out, you know, twenty, thirty years. What will our assessed value be at that point, right? That's a big, big driver as to what, you know, a quarter or fifty cents or thirty cents might actually generate. So as we get closer to that time period and we get more water under the bridge, it helps us estimate that a little bit.
Do we have a model for that, like from Econ Northwest or somebody like that who's modeled what growth might look like in our community? And how that translates to assessed value?
I have not seen that. Um, I do know from an enrollment perspective, we will be flat to declining over the next ten years. Um, but I don't know what that means for both residential and commercial growth uh, in, in our community. But those are things we can look at, Tom.
A variation on that is if this moment we're having right now, where construction costs, both labor and materials are escalating, how does that influence where we need to be with the rate as well? Um, and you know, again, no crystal ball, right? But is that going to be a long-term thing, a medium-term thing?
Yeah, like you said, it's hard to tell right now. Um, we're, we're starting to see cost impacts and, and increases that are going to apply for next summer versus last summer, and it's pretty staggering. Uh, it does concern me looking out towards the future, certainly.
Okay, I mean, is that put like, do we have a sense of how much drag that puts on the system, twenty percent, twenty-five percent? How much capacity is reduced by that?
You know, it's hard to say, really, honestly. It, it'll be pretty significant, though.
Uh, Tom, I can, I can say that there will be an impact. You know, our estimates are going to be as best as they can when we do decide what's the right time to go for a bond. Um, but that's the nature of where we're at right now with dealing with COVID, dealing with pandemic and the impact to our logistics and supply chain. And it's the factor we have to, to take into account when we put this program together.
Right. I would add to that, Tom, that um, that's reason, at the twenty-five cent, it is estimated to be a little over seven hundred million. That allows us more than a hundred, a hundred million per year. Um, is what Aaron was talking about, kind of our burn rate per year. So it allows us to go from a hundred to a hundred and twenty per year with a lot of the unknowns out there.
So the contingency is a little better.
It, it helps us on that backend based on the projects that we've identified through our long-term planning. We've done for the last year and a half, um, that is coming forward actually over the next several months to the board, too.
Last question is around May versus November. We have a number of staff who are carried on bond funds. If we were to go out to November, would we lose those staff? Or would we be able to maintain their employment?
Go ahead, Aaron, jump in.
Yeah, thank you. So right now, we have plans in place to be able to keep those staff uh, through a May election.
But not a, not a November.
Oh, sorry, I misspoke. Yes. By May or November, we will be fine with our staff.
Right now, we're, we're planning for a May of two thousand twenty-three, based on what we had. So we had planned for November twenty-twenty-two, projected out to May of two thousand twenty-three for our staff to be still on our books. That's currently got.
Gotcha, so.
It doesn't stop staff, though, Tom. And one of the factors is, is that if, if I'm an employee of the district and it's like, okay, I've got funding for nine months only for my job type thing, that I'm not looking at other options, or the people aren't coming in and saying, hey, you know, I've seen the projects you've been overseeing type thing. Um, and so it, it doesn't safeguard our existence of existing employees. And you, you know, you've been part of those conversations of how important that is for us as a school district, especially several of these employees who have been here for over eight years. We're a rare district that we actually hire our own employees to manage our entire bond. We don't have, hire an outside firm, and that I think is a huge asset for us.
And that results in reduced costs, too, right?
Ultimately, yes. And longevity of memory in terms of what we've done in our district and the work. And I would also say to this, and we all know this, based on the fact that we're in the world of education, relationships are key to everything. And these people trust our building principles, trust our project managers and our bond staff. They see these familiar faces like, oh, my gosh, thank gosh. You know, they're, they're excited about this work. And it's not having to reestablish all those relationships. So that's a part of it. It's not all of it. It's a part.
I've been continually impressed with different iterations, how every time we're building a building, we get a little better at it and faster. Um, so, yeah.
I do want to caution us, though, when you say faster, um, one of the things that we have learned is ATMA actually saved us money by going slower, especially through COVID, through the, the supply chain. We actually saved money by being able to go for a two-year timeframe. Doing an elementary school, uh, if I go to Aaron and say, I want an elementary school built in a year, he's going to look at me and say, I'm looking for a new job. I mean, it's, we need to be looking at a minimum of a two-year sequence as we're looking out for these, and we'll project for that um, as we look to the future.
It's, it's hard on our schools that we rebuild, but we know it in the long run, it can save us a lot of money.
Yeah.
So Carl, that three-month turnaround on an elementary school we were hoping for, just that's not going to happen?
Yeah, I can get you some double wides.
All right, board members, any other comments before we move to the next section of the meeting? Uh, thank you, Carol. As always, that was amazing. Thank you, you are.
You guys are nice.
That was outstanding, Carol.
Yeah. I love them all.
Thank you, Carol. And uh, yeah, maybe another time we can talk first, but that's a, that's a.
I think we might need something liquid to do that. All right, good night, everybody.
All right, next up, we have the cost recovery plan for central office. So uh, Mr. Schofield stays on and you'll be presenting some information to the board.
Thank you, Chair Colette. I, I was going to kick this up, but let me hand it right over to Carl.
All right, thank you. And Tom, our apologies. Um, we have three people who are presenting on this and our, our agenda doesn't reflect it, so it's Mike, Steve Sparks and myself. So I'll kick it off and then I'll be moving over to Steve Sparks. But again, thank you. Good to see you, or continue to see you this evening. Um, so, we've got an opportunity this evening to go through, um, well, first off, let me begin with the fact that we have acquired um, the building as of October seventh. That building is now ours. Funds were transferred last Thursday for thirteen point five million. And that building has now become our official central office for the future. Uh, we did have had opportunities, Steve Sparks, um, Robert and Jason, who are um, key members in helping with us and design over there, uh, actually facilitated an overview of the building and self-guided tours. And so it was very fun to be able to have staff walk through the building on, on Friday. We had a three-hour window for people to do that. And we've got a couple of next steps here. We've got to execute a contract with the architectural firm, and we'll give a little bit more detail to that in the timeline later in this presentation. In addition to that, develop and refine our space layout. Um, as I assured the uh, board members last week, every employee that is moving into the central office will have a workstation um, that is their workstation to be able to work from. And it's a matter of how we design that and continue to um, design it with the architectural specs in place. So with that, um, the remainder of this presentation, or a good portion of this presentation, is based on the request that the board made last June when we came forward to you, and that was for us to investigate and get appraisals on existing properties that could be considered or may be considered surplus in the future. That's exactly the next portion of this presentation. You're going to see information on the five properties that we have or that may be considered surplus in the future. And most importantly, I want the board to note, you're not making a decision tonight. You are not having to look for a recommendation tonight. This is just information, is all it is. We will need to come to you again in the future when in fact we are ready to move forward with a piece of property, a surplus. And that takes a whole other action step for us to do that. But there will be multiple other conversations prior to that. Again, I want to reiterate, tonight, there's no recommendations or no decisions that need to be made by the board. It is simply to gather information tonight. Um, Steve Sparks is here this evening. He'll walk you through each of these properties. He has been key in helping us acquire the most recent property that what we refer to as um, Horse Barn property down the south end of the district. And he'll also be able to answer any questions that you may have about the specifics of each of these properties as we go forward. So with that, Steve, go ahead and begin. And by the way, Steve is choosing to spend his birthday with us this evening doing this presentation.
Yeah, I'm also missing the Dodger Giants game, but we won't talk about that, will we, Mike? So thank you, Carl. Um, as, as he met, as Carl mentioned, we do have uh, five properties that we looked at um, over the course of the summer and early fall, where we were um, asking an appraisal uh, company to come in and take a look and, you know, kind of kick the tires and see what we would um, be able to market these properties uh, for and at what price if we were to do it, you know, right away. And our intention is not to do it right away. So this is a, is largely an academic exercise in order for us to kind of get a, you know, large um, you know, a high-level look at what um, values might be on these properties. And you can see the five, we've talked about them before, but you can see uh, the five uh, sites that we looked at here. This is what we call the Northwest One Seventy-fourth Parcel. It is immediately um, east of Westview High School. So in relationship to um, you know, other schools in the site, in the area, we acquired this property in two thousand two um, or two thousand four, it started in two thousand two. Because we were the long-range facilities plan at the time, considered the Rock Creek um, uh, campus as a future middle school site. So we needed to replace Rock Creek Elementary. And you can see the proximity to Bethany Elementary School, so creating a boundary here would have been kind of tricky. But with the acquisition and construction of the site and the former Two-Fold Nursery Site, now the Tumwater School Site. the Tumwater School Site, it made the um, you know, the plans for this site redundant. So Rock Creek will remain a elementary, an elementary school. Yeah. So the question is what to do with the site off of One Seventy Fourth? So there'd be no reason to put a third elementary school here with Bethany and Rock Creek, you know, right next to it. So the site is um, a net little over eleven and a half, uh, eleven and a half acres of net acreage, meaning there's no wetlands or riparian areas or other protected uh, land to deduct from it. And it, it comes in at a little over seven and a half million um, dollars um, on a, an appraisal. Now, given the current zoning and what the uh, what Washington County is doing right now with its zoning ordinance, I um, strongly suspect that this appraisal will um, that the, this appraisal price will be much higher in uh, the coming years, just because the density um, for this site will basically uh, quadruple in um, in effect with the new zoning. Our second uh, vacant parcel we looked at is called the Fishback Perrin Parcel, which is right up in the northeast corner of North Bethany, right along the urban growth boundary. So the yellow circle is the uh, Fishback Perrin Site, and you can see um, its proximity in relation to Sato, Springville and Jacob Wismer. You can see the urban um, uh, urban growth boundary line on the east side there. It's this line right here. So this is, on this side is uh, rural Multnomah County, and it's not going to urbanize unless um, you know, the, the land use designation changes over there. And that will be a a very long term and um, problematic uh, uh, effort. But be it as it may, given um, the amount of development that's going in the area, the um, district acquired this um, property in um, two thousand fifteen and use it, using it as a land bank, you can see the amount of development that has happened up there. But given the um, you know, given the proximity of these three schools and the essentially built out nature of the area, it, it would be a um, hard recommendation to make, not an impossible one, but a hard recommendation to make to build an elementary school here when you have um, three newer ones with um, population plateauing and over time will uh, uh, begin to decline. But we still want to keep an eye on it, and it could come to pass that we really do need to build another elementary school up there. So you can see it is also a net acreage, meaning there is no um, nothing to deduct up there. It's almost ten acres, and it's coming in at six point seven million dollars. And again, given the uh, zoning in the area and the developments going on in the area, I'm fairly confident that we could um, get more than this appraisal price um, in the right market conditions. This is the hor- what we call the Horse Barn Site. We acquired this back in two thousand seventeen. Um, it's shaped kind of like um, if Oklahoma and Oregon got together and had a baby. Um, not really sure if we could uh, um, get the panhandle all the way there, but this is um, uh, the parcel very close to uh, Mountainside High School. So you can see Mountainside, yeah, the yellow um, circle up here is where the um, property is in relationship to Mountainside High School and um, Shoals Heights Elementary. So as you go up uh, One Seventy Fifth, you see the um, uh, vineyard over here, we're just west of that over here. So um, this property is also net developable acres and the uh, roadways are all going to be built on the neighboring property. So there's nothing else to dedicate off that property. It is residentially zoned, and it's coming in at almost six point seven million dollars. Uh, that area is developing rapidly and uh, it mostly has been uh, uh, subject to land use entitlement. So you can see from this picture, we do have tenants. Uh, this is Boo Boo and Alba, that um, is Latin for white owl or barn owl. We have um, these owls that have been roosting in there for at least three years. And it's really interesting. The first time you walk in there and they go flying out, it is really, really scary because they aren't that big, but boy, um, they're loud. Anyway. Um, nice to have them there. Uh, it's, it's actually kind of fun. We have the Terranova Site, and um, this is the start of our um, developed properties that we looked at as possibly surplus. It's coming in at just short of a million dollars. Um, this property, it is residentially zoned, but it is in Multnomah County with no urban services. This vertical white line running through the left um, third of the property is the county line. And um, right about where that car is in the aerial is where the sewer, the sanitary sewer ends. So it would be a very easy extension to connect to that sewer, but it's impossible because it's not in the Clean Water Services service area. So because it's um, in Multnomah County, it is served by a septic system, which is down here in the um, front half of the uh, um, property. Its development potential is pretty limited. Also, there is a cell, a long term cell uh, tower lease where an easement runs right up the middle of the um, property to the cell tower up here in the northwest corner of the site. So this property, um, it has some hair with it. It's not to say that it couldn't be sold and or um, leased out to a, a potential user of uh, the building, but it is a um, it would be a challenging lot to, to market. Lastly, we have the Merlot Central Office. This is the southern part of the building. IT is located in this end of the building, and it's the newest part of the structure. It is a um, part of a much larger parcel. Um, the maintenance yard off here to the west, it's all one parcel. But we just looked at the almost six acres of um, the parcel, which would be considered the central office site. It is a mixed use zoning. It is employment um, heavy in terms of its intended use. But as we've talked about before, it is possible to, to do residential on the site as well. It's um, just short of four million dollars in uh, appraised value. And this site does have a number of challenges, uh, not the least of which is uh, drainage. And the water table is very high here. So um, whatever is done is probably going to be uh, move into the existing building and reuse it for um, any type of use. So with the Summit Building, as Dr. Bead noted, we did visit, we did have an open house that had staff visit. This is our MLD staff who are super excited about um, being brought back into the fold in um, the teaching and learning wing or floor of the uh, um, Summit Building. So a lot of them, I think there was about twenty of them showed up on Friday and walked the site. As you can see on the schedule here, we do have um, you know, plans to occupy the building after remodeling. Um, in July, we're gonna occupy from the top floor down to the first floor. The, there's more work as you descend on uh, the floors. And if we can make up any time, so for example, if we can get our permits um, uh, faster from um, the city of Beaverton, we'll be able to um, you know, accelerate our, our project. But given of what we're all experiencing in terms of um, you know, adequate staffing, uh, materials and like, we're feeling fairly confident right now that uh, July is going to be when we are gonna be able to begin occupying the building. I believe that is it, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schofield.
Did we have any questions on the properties? By board members?
Donita?
Happy birthday, Steve. I have a question on the um, you said that the first two property, there's the zoning changes might happen, which why, which will increase the value as they are right now. Do, when we looked at the um, the schedule that was made by uh, Mike last time, we saw that around like second or third year, we were expecting to sell that seven point five. Uh, so do you think by then the zoning would have, is there any idea when the zoning changes might happen, or is that not known at all?
So the state is mandating this zone change. Um, you may recall, last time I spoke about it, House Bill two thousand one, which is um, you could call it the No Single Family Zoning uh, bill. And so all the jurisdictions have until, I believe it's January first, two thousand twenty two, to implement that zoning. And they're all marching um, diligently along to um, get that zoning in place. So regardless of when they're actually going to be able to implement the zoning, and if there's any legal challenges or anything like that, I would, I would um, speculate that three years out, it will be in a, in effect.
That's good to know.
And, and even if it's not in effect, we certainly would do another appraisal for the conditions at the time when we were getting ready to sell, um, if we were going to sell a property.
Okay, thank you.
Karen?
There was one of the properties that you said, um, the one that had the, the white line um, that we could possibly lease, the one with the tower. What are we doing with that property right now? Are we leasing it to somebody or is it just sitting there? And can we, were to lease that one? Well, could we lease?
That is the site of the um, um, um,
Terranova.
Yeah, Terranova Program, where we have the um, farming um, and creative chemistry, I guess, um, classes. So we have students uh, up there, and we're limited by the septic system on the number of students we could have at the site. We can only have eighty people at any one time at the site.
Thank you.
And Karen, something else, just for board information, we would today never purchase a piece of property this small, an elementary site. Uh, we, we try to target somewhere between around ten acres. The other properties you've seen are between nine and ten acres for an elementary school. This is the old Bonnie Slope Elementary School, prior to the new Bonnie Slope Elementary School. And this building has been used for a variety of things. It's used to be our print shop. Uh, it's where our couriers used to work out of uh, before it became Terranova. And it actually was a vacant for a number of years. Um, so.
It is the furthest outpost in the realm, and it is something that could, you know, easily, I would imagine, easily rented to um, you know, users like uh, you know, an artist colony or, you know, repair shops or, you know, things like that where you don't need uh, you know, high visibility frontage um, in terms of a retail center.
Just to clarify, I'm not thinking we should get rid of the Terranova School for the kids or anything like that. I was just wondering. I didn't make the connection. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Like, the actual location, can, can you give me like a street reference so I can visualize where it is?
Mill Pond and Thompson Road. So I live down, you know.
Oh, I gotcha. It's like literally on the edge. Okay, I gotcha.
That's Thompson, you know, it's all built up there now, but like, um, Mill Pond goes southward there on the picture.
You like almost a skyline, right?
Yep.
Okay.
You, you've probably driven right by it and didn't even know what it was, because it's, it's kind of sets back a little bit and there's a fence.
Easy to drive right by and not recognize that it was a school at one point.
Yeah. Gotcha. I was just trying to visualize it now. At least I know the area. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board on any of the properties presented?
Whose zone is it in? Terranova?
Three. Aaron, it's short. No, kidding.
I know, I'm like, it's not on mine. I just don't see it.
It's like in Zone Three. It's in the corner of um, Zone Three.
Okay. It just wasn't on our list. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
It's, it's not because it's, it's actually, I mean, it's a program and not a school.
Yeah. It's about a mile from my house, I guess.
It's like Rachel Carson. It's its own program and that just happens to use that. So it's nobody's school to oversee.
And please know that if anybody wants a tour, love to take you, be happy to take you to any of these sites if you'd like, so.
Cool. Carl, Carl, this is Don. Can you talk about, I know the board members that had uh, initiated uh, uh, interest in them being able to visit the site. I know that you and your team are working, trying to uh, provide a, a time for board members to come and and be able to go through the building.
Yes, we are. Uh, we're looking at, we want, we're looking at Don's schedule and trying to make um, accommodations for work schedules as well. So looking at something probably after four o'clock one day, um, that we would make the new uh, Summit Building, the new central office available for you to walk through so that you can get a sense of the space and what we're looking at. Um, but that should be coming in the next couple of weeks. So look forward to that. Yes, Karen?
One of the pieces that we talked about um, as a board also with you all was that piece of having that bottom floor access to the community. So I, I just wanted to note that that's something that you're working on for our community, that there'd be some community spaces on that.
Absolutely. And Karen, I think you're gonna be ecstatic to see that space when you're, when you get in there. All right. With that, we'll move to Mike.
Okay, I'll try to catch us up on time here. We'll get through some of the uh, date and timeline stuff that we talked about presenting to you. You can see a number of things on here, but primarily Monday, October twenty fifth is the key date. That's where, when we're going to circulate uh, the term sheet to banks. It'll be due back from the banks on uh, Monday, November eighth. That's the deadline for them to submit their bid. Tuesday, November ninth, we'll do a conference call and select the bank. So that's when we'll kind of know what our rates are and where we're headed. Uh, and then we'll be off to the races, trying to get it closed. And uh, the actual closing and funds wired, we scheduled currently for Tuesday, November thirty. Plenty of time to do this uh, and get those funds on hand by the end of November. Any questions about financing?
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Our next agenda item then will be um, board committee reports. So if the chairs of the board committees have information just to share out, now's the time uh, to let everybody know what you've been up to over the last month or so. Um, and we'll find a, a regular agenda item to do this as we move forward in the school year. Um, but I know Karen, you're working on a committee, and Becky, you've got a committee as well. Um, and I can give a little bit of information about what we've been doing on the ad hoc policy committee.
I'll go. Um, mine's gonna be uh, really quick and we'll have, but uh, essentially the uh, bond and planning committee met for the first time uh, a week ago, last Friday, and um, you got to, you got to hear a lot of that from Carol, um, even though we didn't have Carol there. It was just talking about, so it was uh, very interesting to just hear the possibility, I think, at the beginning, uh, at our August work session, we were kind of thinking that the bond would be something that we were aiming for in November of two thousand twenty two. And in just one meeting's time, now we're really looking at the possibility of, of May, two thousand twenty two. So that more will be coming and the committee will be just marching really quickly here. So you'll be getting uh, really quick reports. And I think this is the type of thing we're probably not gonna get updates between uh, wo- work sessions. We're gonna have to keep the board. So it will be on our agenda every single month as a, as a board um, at board meetings since we will be truncating um, how we're looking at this. So um, that's what the bond and planning committee um, did in their, their first meeting. since we will be truncating how we're looking at this. So that's what the bond and planning committee did in their, their first meeting.
So this is Karen and I'm responsible for the, we have, I have a committee that's called an equity committee that's looking at our multilingual students, specifically with a focus on dual language programs as well as diversifying the workforce, so working with HR on that. So we had our first meeting on October eighth. The main focus of our first meeting was to build common understanding about our, the lenses that we each bring, including our strengths and biases into this work around multilingual learners and that of diversifying the workforce. So we had some time where Dr. Cevallos from our equity department presented us with some scenarios for us to learn what the experiences of multilingual students that are level one, level two, level three, level four. And then we learned about, about the work that Toshiko in the multilingual department has kind of in, in store for the next few years and looking at a feasibility study that's being done around our dual language programs. And then we ended with Susan Rodriguez introducing our HR staff. And we knew that she was going to be giving the board a report today on HR, the work that the HR department is doing. So our next meeting, we'll be meeting monthly. We'll focus on some more kind of dissecting some of the HR pieces, but we'll be meeting monthly, so we'll be hearing about this group on a regular basis. And Becky and Ugana are on that committee with me as well, so it's great to have their voices there.
And I'll just give you guys a brief update. The, the policy committee is ad hoc, so we only meet when there's, there's work that needs to be done. And the work at the beginning of the school year was taking a look at the anti-racist vision statement and policy ACB, which we brought before the board. So you, you've seen that work. But we went over it, workshopped it. It was myself, Becky and Karen. And I know that there's more coming. I think there's some updates from OSBA. And so we're going to be probably dealing with that in different tranches as it comes forward. And so look for more policy updates and, and things at future board meetings. And Sunita, do you have a question?
Eric and I are on the bond accountability committee, and I wanted to thank Mr. Mead in answering all the questions I had on the Westview project. And we, we both were, I'll let Eric talk more about it, but we, we saw what the bond projects were. And one of the things that came up was that there's going to be cameras in the schools. So maybe as the board, we need to look at the policies of data retention and how we are going to use that information, so.
Thanks, Sunita. We'll, we'll look into that. Right, so our next agenda item is new format for school reports. And I see the Stanford logo, so I know John Bridges is here. We got Jenny as well. And I'll just give you guys just a little quick introduction. This work started a couple of months ago in preparation for the school year where we thought we have an opportunity to take a look at the school reports that the previous board had been receiving. And, and the format for school reports in the past has been that we have two principals who come before us. There's a standardized reporting format, mostly test scores, but there's also some other quantitative data and some qualitative information on them as well. And we have an opportunity to review that information ahead of time, and the principals come and give a presentation to us and we ask questions. And they're basically on a roughly three-year rotation where every three years, we're going to see all of the principals in the school district. What we're trying to do here is, is update what those reports look like. And we're really interested in what everybody on the board is, is thinking when they take a look at those reports. And what your ideas might be, the, the ODE report. And then each school, I don't think they're called improvement plans. Jenny, you can help me here, school.
Learning plans.
Thank you. Learning plans are the two documents that we were looking at as a potential replacement for the prior format that we had. And with that, I will let John and Jenny talk about more of that work.
Hey, thanks, Tom. I appreciate being with you all this evening. And Tom kind of gave you an update on what we've been doing the last couple of months, that in your board report, you have two different documents. The one is what we used last year. So you saw the data that John Bridges gave and also successes, challenges, and also an action plan from that school. So that was the school reports that we did before. Then you also saw kind of an idea for the new ones, which included, just like Tom said, the school report card and the school learning plans. So I'm going to have John go over this, the report cards, and then after that, I'll go over the school learning plans.
Thanks, Jenny. Good evening. So you have the current reporting template that we've been using, and then two versions of the school profiles or school report cards. The first one is from two thousand twenty-one, and those were just released last Thursday, and you'll notice there's not a lot of data on them due to the pandemic and the lack of comparability of data to prior years. So we also included in the packet the eighteen nineteen profile for McKay, so you could see what the data would look like when that was all filled in. I'm, I'm sure you noticed some similarities between the data that's reported on the school profile and what we've been including in the school reports. You noticed in the situation sheet, we were first, our school template came out in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And then ODE through an extensive statewide engagement process with parents and community members that was intentionally around engaging stakeholders from historically underserved groups. Got feedback from parents on what they wanted to see on school profiles, and they rolled out their redesign after the first year that we've been using the current template. I should note that the high school profile is a little bit different from what you've seen for McKay, which is the profile for all elementary and middle schools. The high school template is more focused on the end outcomes of high school. So graduation rates, dropout rates, whether students are earning six credits in ninth grade, as well as post-secondary outcomes. So what percentage of students are enrolling in post-secondary education a year after high school? So I hope that explains the report cards, and I'll turn it back to Jenny to talk about the school learning plans.
Thanks, John. Three years ago, our executive administrators began using the template for all of our schools, and we titled it a school learning plan. And what we do is we conduct what we call academic conferences every fall. In that academic conference, it has a superintendent, the deputy superintendent, executive administrators, and the principals in that academic conference. At that time, the principal presents their learning plan and is given feedback and also has an opportunity to ask questions. Because we've been doing this successfully for the last three years, we felt that it was really an important piece of their school for you to see as well. They also posted on their school website. And so in there, you have a sample plan from McKay that does happen to be a year ago, so it's not up to date. But we are proposing that we use the school report card and the school learning plan for presentations at your school board meetings. Now, hoping that we have a few minutes to discuss, just a couple of questions for you. So be thinking about, does this replacement of the existing school report template and the school profile, does it meet your needs as a board member? And also, if the school report card consists of these two pieces, what would you like the principals to report out on? And they have about five minutes. David Williams usually coaches them a little bit beforehand so that they can be brief in their statements. But just wondering, kind of with Tom's help too and John's, some of your thoughts on what you would like to see and if that works for you. Susan?
I was going to say, I have a couple of comments. One, you know, in the past, I think there's been like, school board, board members have been part of, I don't know if it was part of the planning committee, and so this was like worked on as a committee. So I'm kind of feeling like at the end of our, I'm just giving you a little feedback, at the end of our work session, it's not really giving us enough time to kind of like look at the thing. And I don't, I don't know for, like, kind of taking away the school board members, you know, participation and looking at metrics that way, so that's one question. And then if we are looking at, you know, like, like, I do like the concept of, you know, using the state metrics to some extent. But when I was looking at the report coming from the principals, the one thing I would say is the layout's kind of weird because it's in three columns, and it makes it hard to read because if you go down column one, at some point it's going down to another page. But then you got to go up and look at the, you know, because usually you read left to right.
Right.
That's going down, so, you know, in terms of just reading it. So I mean, I guess I just want to understand the process, so that would be my number one question. Number two is like the, that particular format, I do like, you know, the principal kind of explaining what the issues are in that school and, you know, how they're addressing them. That's really important. That's probably more important than the actual statistics in some ways. And the other thing I have to look at is, I hope that we're, as we're building for the high school, that we're looking, and middle schools and all our schools, that when we're looking at statistics, we're looking at it from the COVID lens that our kids, and you know, that we're meeting our kids where they're at versus the, you know, the statistics of, well, where are they in terms of graduating on time? Because, I mean, realistically, we're looking at, you know, it, it could be six years before a student can, is actually going to graduate. So I mean, I hope we're looking from that lens as we're looking at our reports.
So Susan, I'll take the first part of your question, which is like, how are we formatting this document and creating it with board input? The idea is to get input from everybody on the board. This isn't just a committee thing. Everybody's affected by this. And that's why we're bringing it to folks tonight. What we could do is at the next board meeting, have a version of it ready to show everybody and kind of go through. Depending on the input we get tonight, and then if that looks good, it could become something that we greenlight and go into November and start using.
And Susan, just to kind of elaborate on that a little bit too, is because we were, Tom had suggested a review of what we were doing before. I think that it gives us a really good opportunity to take a look at just what you were pinpointing in terms of COVID. Because you're right, there's not a lot of data, and it does give the principal an opportunity to talk about the specifics in the school that they're doing to help without learning loss that's taken place, so.
Karen and then Becky.
I appreciate, you know, honoring the work that the principals have done on their school learning plans and having them focus on that. I think that that would be good. I don't know how these are connected to our district strategic plan, so if they could make a connection, that would be interesting, I mean, helpful to me as we're moving in a direction as a, as a district. The other piece, that the state, the state profile ones is an easy way for us to get information, but this year's, next year's, a lot of the data will be missing. So that just came out from ODE, like how much of it is missing? I was trying to like, what is actually in there, you know? They came out with that yesterday. What I would like to see, that what I see missing that I'm really interested in, and I keep holding this one up, but the, you know, when we had the data for the not passing marks and we had it really broken down to English, I, I see migrant students missing. I see our, the breakdown of our native student data that, that was asked for today. And then I, I really appreciated how these reports had all those different columns of, you know, students with, without disabilities, students with disabilities, non-English language learners. And I could read it, or I could just send it, or you can just look on the report from that group. But all those different data, if we can start to see that across all of our district schools, would be really helpful to me in my understanding of who's at that school and how we're being supportive of them, of our students, our various student populations. So I saw that missing from that one sheet.
Thanks, Karen. I think that is just excellent feedback, and I think that that breakdown is really important, so it might be something we can take back. And also, when you're speaking about the strategic plan, we had a lot of discussions around this because I think Susan mentioned it, that's where it started. And I do think there needs to be a, a connection with the strategic plan, so we've talked about that as well. Might be, I don't know, I'm looking at John, and it might be at the beginning part of it where we can identify those strategic, strategic measures.
I think at this point, Jenny and Tom, feel free to jump in. We're still committed to doing the strategic plan reporting in February where we report the district level results that are disaggregated by the different student groups on the strategic plan measures. And then the school data for the most recent year is also reported disaggregated by those same groups. So as a board, you'll still have that information all in one place so that you can compare across schools, across demographic groups. But it changes the focus for the, of the proposal that's in front of you to think about is it kind of changes the tenor of the conversation with principals where they're focused on their school learning plan and what they're doing to address the needs in those three pillars of learning. Whereas the strategic plan is kind of a, a step up, looking at the district level, the performance of different groups, as well as how schools are serving those groups in the most recent year. So we're not, we don't want to take away the strategic plan reporting, but this is kind of severing a little bit the strategic plan data that was embedded in the current school report format that we've had.
I wouldn't, I know, as, as far as how district works, work, I don't think, like, I'm assuming that they built their school learning plan for this year. So for us to actually ask them to change or add anything to their school learning plan this year seems not something we want to do or have them spend time on. I'm thinking as we think about next couple of years, it would be great to have them connect it to this. I'm not saying put the strategic plan in there. I'm just saying, like, for example, my equity area focus goal number one connects to the district strategic plan equity thing. My focus, my goal, academic excellent goal connects here, like a sentence or just a connector of how that's going to happen. I'm not saying revamp it or report on it every time, and I wouldn't want to give extra work to our principals because, and I think I actually am very impressed with us using their learning plans because that holds them accountable to their community about what they put on their goals. And I think I also see this as, I'm hoping it's a working document for them. So as they're reaching some of those goals, they can go back and adjust it throughout the year so that they can be showing the community, hey, these are really serious goals. I'm not going to, some of these goals will not be met. We know will not be met in one year. You know, some of their goals might be a two or three-year goal, and that's amazing. And I think I'm really happy that we would be connecting what they share with us to this plan because that makes it more of a plan that's not just going to sit there, but it's something that honors their work and what they see as a focus for their students and the growth for their school. So, and I value their, their work that they're putting into those, and also what they see, they're the experts in their schools, you know, and with the teachers, and they build that together. So I'm excited about that. Thank you.
A couple of thoughts too, you know, we have a strategic plan that's older at this point. And I don't know how much tight alignment there is with that strategic plan where we're at right now. I think that that strategic plan has, they all have a useful life, and maybe you're at a certain percentage of using them, and we're sort of towards the tail end of it. We know that as we're doing a superintendent search, that a, a great time to do a new strategic plan is when you're getting a new superintendent. And that allows that person to kind of come on and build their plan and work on what they want to do. So we know that that's probably something that's coming next year. But the school reports, because we have a new board, because of what happened with COVID, because there's an opportunity to take a look at what we're doing, we wanted to, to still do something this year. And that doesn't preclude further revisions, so if we have a strategic plan that changes next year, then that may revise our, our school reporting plans. But it is an opportunity to try things. We have this kind of interesting slide space we're in, where we can try something out that's new, see if we like it as a board, and then if it's durable, great, let's keep doing it. If it's not durable, then it will probably be changing anyway as we move into that new strategic plan.
And just to finish on my last thought, like, the, the, when I'm asking for the data for each school that's broken down like this, including the migrant and our native student breakdown and all those pieces, it's something that I'm not thinking that I, I want to, I, I would hope that we're starting to use. it's something that I'm not thinking that I, I want to, I, I would hope that we're starting to use this breakdown in just every time we're reporting on our students. I, I think it's very helpful for us to really know. And it helps those buildings know, you know, how many migrant students do they have? How many, you know, if our native students are there? And that's, those are some of the populations that um, we're really focusing our energies on. And that's how we're actually funding some of these, these spaces with how we're putting staffing in. So I think it's important to be transparent with our community of some of those numbers.
Becky and then Susan, and I think I saw Eric's hand up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak again, since I was part of the committee that built those uh, sheets, you know, legacy stuff.
So Becky?
Yep. Um, and you know, um, Jenny and John, if, if totally off base, because I don't, I don't want to make something more complicated than it needs to, to be. Because I just say the time that I'm on the board, I think this is like our fourth stab at this and, and that we all have, um, I, I look at that bottom about our school and I, I'm thinking, um, you know, where, where we gather that information and how much of that is uh, subjective and actual data? What is the, what is the survey that is done with all teachers at the end of the year? I know I've spent a lot of time reading that and it's never consolidated somewhere. What do we call that? Uh, that report that comes from teachers?
Well, we have a, we do a district survey of staff each year, and then the state has in the past done a tell survey for the teaching staff every other year that got delayed, is being revamped and that revamp has gotten delayed because of the pandemic. So I'm not sure if we're gonna.
Yes, those, that's, that's exact, those are the two things I was referring to, John. And I'm just wondering if we capture any of that information, all that, because if you go through it, it's a lot of detailed information. Um, so I'm wondering, the other thing for me, and it may be next to impossible, what's really important to me as a board member is cohorting information. Because when we put new curriculum and when we put new, like now we're going to change our grading or when we change at the high school from trimesters to semesters. I want to compare, be able to compare apples to apples that when we implement something new, because it doesn't, it takes much longer than a year to see when you put something new, that when I'm looking at the data, oh, that's right, that's, you know, that's the year the pandemic hit. Oh, that's the, that's the year that we eliminated. You know, we went to the, the eyes and the ends. And so you're comparing, you know, apples to apples. But for me, the cohorting is, you know, how many kids do we have K through five that have gone through our system and they have stayed? And that might be a next to impossible. But then I know that we're bearing down on, is it our building leadership? Is it that we don't have the right P D for teachers? Do we not have the right staffing? I want to know when we're trying to make decisions about dollars, are we fixing an, an actual element that's going to change the outcome of learning for kids? Rather than, you know, when we, when we implement something like Avid or when we implement, so for me to see the cohort of the, the third, fifth, that's, that's the kind of thing that's important to me. So you guys might tell me that's impossible to calculate. It's impossible to see. Um, but, but that's the kind of thing, more than some of this nice, you know, color coding sort of thing. Those, those are the kind of things. And then also the stuff there at the bottom, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how uh, we get, we gather that information and that how accurate it is, because it seems like it's pretty subjective to me.
Ja, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually get cohort information um, for um, for growth, uh, not just uh, summative information we're going, but we actually get that growth information. I think what's going to be extremely hard, Becky, is to try to look at that over the last couple of years and see what, what happened in this era of COVID. One of the things that I'd suggest, and so I've been here six years and, and through all these reports is, I mean, I believe that through our teaching and learning team, especially with um, John Bridges and his team and what we can provide you, we can provide you whatever you want, what would really be helpful if the board, if we could work as a committee or at the board, and maybe there does need to be a committee. And for you to tell us exactly what you want and the format that you like it in. Um, I've, I've listened and, and a lot of the data you're requesting um, around demographics, academics, uh, that data is there. Now, what I will say, it might take a little bit, it's a little bit harder to dig through and find it. It is there for each school. It's there for the districts. You can even go in and look at other districts and other schools if you want to, if you want to do it. But I really, what I'd like to do is find out what would be uh, the most, the, the, the easy way for you as a board to get that fifty thousand foot view, but also for you to go in as a board and say, okay, we have some pockets of success and maybe we have some uh, pockets of challenges within our district. So just trying to figure out, but that's, that's been, I'll just, a, a little bit of the frustration of our staff and and, and myself to a certain extent, is really finding out exactly what the board wants. But because, believe me, we have the, we have the uh, the expertise to get what you want. So I don't know, it's just a suggestion. I don't know if we can bring some folks in and, and find out exactly where you want to be. And what, what you want, how you want to view it and be able to look at it. We're data rich.
Okay, so Susan, Eric, and then Sunita.
I just have a comment that this is a, uh, then I want to thank you, Tom, for bringing this up and in, in terms of reporting. It's, it's an, it's just basically, it's a normal thing to talk about. That we're looking, we're kind of getting back to something that is it very important for, for us to do as a school board that we haven't been able to talk about for the last year and a half? And granted, our numbers for every single thing will be skewed because COVID, but the fact is that we're starting to look at, okay, you know, what are the issues, especially for our most marginalized students out there? And what, what, what resources need to to be taken for these students? That's really my comment. I'm just happy we're having this conversation.
Right on.
Thanks.
Um, Eric?
My hackles went up a little bit because, you know, I, I worked on that committee, you know, with um, Anne and Jenny and, and everybody, you know, we, we worked a lot on to build that thing and there was a lot of edits on it. And so, I mean, I do love the disaggregated data because, you know, it led to really rich conversations. People like Donna would look at, you know, social restorative, you know, justice and then Steve, like, you know, you know, she cared about exposures and all that data there. And, and some people look at, you know, the um, you know, how people are trending, you know, like, you know, the cohort trend lines and in schools. And then I think, you know, Dawn and her people might care about leadership at a school seeing over the, you know, after a period of time, a principal can't, you know, turn a dial. I think those are important too. So I'm still, I like the old ones a little bit more, but I can see some of the benefits of that new pretty gooey of that state one. So I mean, maybe there's a way that we can um, work, like you said, like a committee or something where we work to get, you know, the best of both worlds. And we have new boards, probably different passions there. So we have to kind of find out what every board member really cares about. Um, you know, but um, you know, so as, you know, that's kind of my thoughts is like, maybe we don't make it a quick like either or, it's maybe it's a hybrid possibly. So um, because you know, I remember the meetings, Jenny, we were doing a lot of meetings.
Yes, I. I totally remember the meeting.
Yeah, we, it took a while to get there and then like different passions from different board members. And we finally got it going and, and it felt like it was a really successful part of the meeting. It was like five or 10 minutes for school and, you know, we get to meet the leaders, they come out in front. It was really good, good questions. It was a really good feeling to part of the meeting. So, you know, I just think maybe you don't have to make a decision yet. We just got to play together and figure out what we're going to do. So.
Anita?
Oh, what I wanted to say was that this information that you provided is a really good one. And like as a new board member, when I wanted to research about schools, I would go into the website. And I, I feel as for me, that it deserves more than a 20 minute discussion at the end of the meeting. We need to discuss about this a little bit more. Like for instance, um, when you said that the success and challenges are changed into the new one C D, the learning plan is good. But if you wanted to see the challenges, is this being replaced in a certain place where you could probably walk us through that this is what it looks like? And we may have questions about like as a new board members, okay, these are the challenges that they faced and these are the things that they are recommending that if we did this, then we can probably move the school forward or the students forward in their learning. So I think it's a very, very important information that you're providing to the board members and to the public, to the students, to the parents. So it needs a little bit more thinking, at least for me, I feel, because I'm new. I don't know, you guys have already worked on it a lot. But I feel that it needs more work, which will be very helpful to the parents and students and the community in general.
Thanks, Anita. So here's my challenge, guys. When we put together our group of committees for the year and I brought the first draft to the board, it was too much. So I actually removed the committee, right, to get us to a place. We've got a superintendent search, we have an S R O process, we have a lot of things that have a, a big pull on our time. And our committees are full. The bond committee has really got, I mean, the presentation tonight, we may have a lot to do there. And then I know Clarence Committee, there's a lot going on there as well. I, my challenge is, is where would I put it if I put it in a committee? And that's why I brought it to you tonight in this format. Would we be comfortable if we take the input? Because I've been taking notes from what everybody says. Take a stab in the dark, bring it back to the board at the next board meeting for a discussion item. So everybody can take a look at it. If it looks like, hey, this just isn't viable, it's going to take more time. Then maybe we need to go back to the old format or do something status quo for a little bit. But if it works, if it's something that takes into account the feedback from tonight and people feel good about it, then maybe we can go forward with it. Becky?
I, I think exactly what you just, you said. I, I think right now, we, we are out of sync with our strategic plan. That is a big thing that needs to, to go forward next, the next. Um, we, we know we're not going to be able to look at the data we want to because of where we are with everything in the next year and a half. But we do want to start the process of having principals start coming back and presenting to us at, at board meetings, because we did not do that all last year. And um, so I would say with everything that's on here, we want something if this, you know, whatever format is not perfect, we want something. And I, I would say that um, you know, either take a stab at what people said here or just go back to the old one. And then that's just something this next year that we, we take note of, of things that we want more of. And then when we have a strategic plan, we can make sure that those dovetail better. Um, and, and just so we can move forward at least with, because it's going to be, it's going to be the end of October. Um, so that's what, that's what I would vote for right now. Not a perfect, not a perfect answer, not a perfect situation, but at least moves us, has us moving forward.
I see some heads nodding. Does anybody object to that as a way forward? Okay, then we'll bring an item to the, the next board meeting in October. Um, I, I want to ask one question. I know it's getting late. Is there anything in any of these reports that you don't think you need? Is there anything where you're looking at that you're like, that's not helpful? Because I'm hearing we want to expand out, right? And we, we could potentially do quite a large report. But I'm wondering if there's anything that folks are seeing there where they're like, this just isn't of value to me and it's going to be too much.
But I don't know, so I wasn't here last year. I'm looking at one that has a graph, right? Um, I think, I don't know what page it is, page one. I, I can't, I'll have a way to tell you, but this one. And um, it has a lot of data. I think that there's just a few data pieces missing. So I don't think it's like revamping the whole thing. There's just a few added questions or lines that could be added. And I, what I, and I, and I the school's improvement plan, I think it's important for them to be able to share off their school improvement or learning plans because that's their goal. So I think I want to value that. I don't want to do something that's going to give principals more work. I want to, I want to provide, I want, if this is what they have right now, let's go off of that for me with the added data part that maybe John, Dr. Bridges can put into that other form. But I don't want to give principals more work right now. Um, and I think that we can build something together and I'm willing to help um, work with whoever um, is working on it for next year as we move forward. But I think it's amazing to have the principals come and share. And your suggestion, I think.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Okay, um, any other questions or comments or we ready to move to the next item? Okay, so what have we got coming up next?
It's a consent agenda.
I know. All right. So um, do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Your motion, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second the motion. All right, it has been properly moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any discussion from board members? Okay, Carrie None, I'm going to go to a vote. All right, um, if, if board members answer uh, aye or nay, um, Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Karen Perez?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Sunita Gard?
Aye.
Ugana Nenaya?
Aye.
Becky Timchuck?
Aye.
Tom Colette, aye. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. And with that, I think we are done for the night. That was quite a bit of work. Thanks to the staff for presenting us with so much information. Thanks, board members, for hanging in there through a long meeting. And uh, I hope everybody has a good rest of their night and we will see everybody back soon here on Wednesday night. Thanks, everyone.